We're ready to start.
Okay, okay, we're going ahead and do a call to order. For the neighborhood board meeting for November. I'm sorry, I'm not there person. I was earlier to help set up, but I went to a wedding on Friday and a lot of COVID got spread around, so I'd rather not have you guys be impacted by that. So we'll go ahead and start off with the monthly reports Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening. My name is firefighter one Nick Hudson representing the IAF Fire Station. The statistics provided below represent confirmed numbers of incidents in the neighborhood boards geographical area for the previous month. Should you have questions, please email the HFD's Community Relations Office at hfdnhb@Honolulu.gov. I also forwarded that into the chat. Incident statistics for October of 2023 for fires, we had two structure fires. One wildland or brush fire, one nuisance fire, zero cooking fires and five activated alarms which resulted in no fire. For emergencies, we had 130 medicals, zero motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, three motor vehicle crashes or collisions and one mountain rescue, no ocean rescue or no hazmat incidents. The fire safety tip and announcement for the fire safety tip is holiday cooking safety. Keep everyone safe this holiday season. Thanksgiving is the peak day for home cooking fires with more than three times the daily average for such incidents. Christmas Day and Christmas Eve ranks second and third, both having nearly twice the daily average. Unintended cooking is by far the leading contributing factor in cooking fires and fire deaths. Stay in the kitchen and focus on the food while you were cooking on the stove top. Stay in the home when cooking your turkey and check on it frequently. And if you want a fried turkey, purchase it from a grocery store, restaurant, or buy a fryer that does not use oil. Turkey fryers that use cooking oil are not safe. These fryers use large amounts of oil at high temperatures, which can cause devastating burns. Consider purchasing an infrared fryer, air fryer, or electric turkey fryer that has been listed by a qualified tested laboratory. Do not leave fryers unattended when in use. With that, I would like to open it up. Any questions for Honolulu Fire Department?
Board members, any questions for Honolulu Fire Department? Okay, I do have a question. So we've been trying to find out what mitigation activities you guys are doing in regards to like the wildfire prevention stuff. I have received so many questions since what happened on Maui. And especially when it comes to Pearl City and Iaia and the mountain range behind our areas here. About what mitigation factors you guys are doing to assist with that. So is there is there a particular individual or particular person that's got point that's doing a project or something like that that we can reach out to that can talk to us about what they're doing in regards to this?
So we do have a wildland and brush fire cadre that kind of takes charge on training incidents and then there are also ones that look into what methods that we can use to either better mitigate and or attack them as far as a direct person of contact. I will go ahead and reach out and I will get a good contact to forward on to you guys. I don't have a direct one at this moment, but I'm sure we have somebody that I can get you in contact with.
Okay, yeah, definitely appreciate that. Include myself and Logan Hutchinson on that one, would you please?
Yes, will do.
Okay, thank you. Community members, any questions for HFD?
Hey Chair Wood, this is Logan. If you can keep an eye out for, I'm gonna put my hand up online for whenever there's a question in person, yeah?
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Chair Wood, I just want to ask for a follow up on the bus stop at West Ridge, which is right by the fire hydrant.
Go ahead. Sorry, could you repeat your question?
Did you have a follow up on the south of the bus stop located right by West Ridge? Fire hydrant?
No, nothing that got forwarded to us on this time, although I'll reach back out.
Okay, community members, any other questions? Or board members?
All right, can you come up to the mic?
Is there any procedures or protocols for putting out electric vehicle fires? You just let it burn?
No, we treat electric vehicle fires as we do any other vehicle fire. The policy is not to just let it burn in place. However, electric vehicle fires differ from your standard vehicle fires because lithium ion batteries take a long time and a lot of water to cool off. So there is a different practice and procedure for extinguishing those, but the policy is not to just let them burn in place.
The reason I ask is when you put a lot of water on it, there's a lot of hazardous chemicals that go down with the water into our storm drain system? Is that something that is checked after the fire is put out?
No, it is not. I mean, HFD does have a storm water and wastewater protection plan in place for our everyday use within fire stations and for day to day operations. However, just due to the nature of life safety being the priority, firefighting efforts are ones that are excluded from having to prevent wastewater runoff to storm drains. In that instance, it is allowed as an exception within the city and county stormwater protection plan. We try our best if we can, but the life safety and incident stabilization takes priority in that instance.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. No other questions, Logan? On that end?
Just want to make a point, Chair, that I'll just give like a quick pass around the room and yeah, if I don't see any questions, I won't raise my hand.
Roger. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, sir, for your report. Much appreciated.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, same to you. Okay, Honolulu Police Department.
Hello, good evening. Sergeant Miller with Pearl City District Three. Our reports for this month for actually for October in the area, we have total calls to service of 6,205. Of those six are motor vehicle thefts, two burglaries, 21 regular thefts, and then 14 UMBs, which is a burglary to a vehicle, basically. For the month of September, we have six motor vehicle thefts, four burglaries, 30 general thefts, and then eight more vehicle break-ins. And for total for September, it'll be 5,840 calls.
Okay, thank you. Members, any questions for HPD? Okay, nothing heard. Community members, any questions for HPD? Okay, nothing heard. Sir, thank you for your report. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Chair, I got my hand up.
Oh, sorry, I keep forgetting. Sorry, Logan. Go ahead.
I had a follow up question from the last board meeting. There's buses parked across the street from Anna Miller's by the Central Pacific Bank area. And if you try to make a left turn going northbound, the buses block your plain of view. I seen somebody plant a sign, but there's a bag over it. Are they gonna make that no left turn at that place coming out from where the Central Pacific Bank is?
Which direction are we going on that turn?
Okay, it's on, I believe, is it Shri Kanohe coming down past Carriage?
Okay.
If you're making a left turn going up southbound back up to Mauna Loa. There's about a bus is parked on the side of the road right in front of that exit from our Central Pacific is. The cars going down go like 30 by 40. If you make a left turn, you don't have any view of sight as far as those cars coming down?
Okay, okay. Sorry, this is our first of, the first, we will check that out tonight. I'm not sure what buses that is. Do you recall what buses they are?
Well, it's city and county buses. They use that area as a staging area.
Okay, so so the so the general view is being blocked if we try to turn left?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, we'll definitely bring that up with them and then I'll notate that and try to bring it up in the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, another question?
Hi, good evening. I noticed lately there's a lot more presence of police with the roadblock tech on Kahua Pani Street, which I think is great. But they're really close to Salt Lake Boulevard, so people can just go straight, right? You see the police lights? You go straight down Salt Lake Boulevard to go to Kamehameha instead of turning on Pani Street. Is there a reason why they're not more up to where people don't see them and have to take the turn and can't turn around?
The placement of the roadblock is solely decided by the sergeant on duty. I believe they use that one because it is still effective regardless if you see it or not. They are, they do have stats backing themselves up. They also rotate spots all night. They don't have it only in one spot. So that may be a separate reason. They tend to do at least two different locations at night.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, HPD, thank you so much for your time, sir. Appreciate the report. I need to stop just for a second. I am remiss and we needed to know. Logan, do we have quorum tonight?
Chair, yeah, so I've been keeping track of attendance. We currently have 11 of 15 members on, so we do have quorum. I can do a roll call if you like.
No, we're good. As long as we have quorum, I'm just trying to speed things up. So if we have quorum, we're good. Okay, moving on. Border Water Supply, Tracy?
Good evening, Chair Wood, members of the IAF Neighborhood Board and members of the IAF community. I'm Tracy Burgo with Border Water Supply. This month's report, I'm sad to report that there are, there were five main breaks reported in October for this Neighborhood Board District. October 2nd, there was an eight inch main break on Hapaki Street in Newtown. October 9th, there was another eight inch main break on Aka Aka Street. This is Iaia Heights. October 11th, there was a 12 inch main break on the 98 1400 block of Ka'akou Manu Street up in Pearl Ridge. October 12th, there was an eight inch main break on Palai Alii Way, Halava Heights. And October 22nd, there was a eight inch main break at the 99 1200 block of Iaia Heights Drive. As far as our general water announcements goes, Border Water Supply has launched its 2024 poster and poetry contest. The poster contest is open to grades K through six. The poetry contest is open to grades seven to 12. This year's theme is "Our Water, Our Home", and the deadline to enter is February 28, 2024. For more information, can go to our website at wwwboardofwatersupply.com/wcwcontest. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Any questions from the board for the Border Water Supply? Okay, nothing heard. Any community members, any questions for the Border Water Supply? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, it's just for the people online on our things.
Do you guys heard the water usage? How much water does the military use as far as percent of the island tour?
That's a good question. The military has a lot of its own sources, so Border Water Supply, I'm not sure if we have that information, but I can look into it and the end group can bring back something when we meet again at that very.
I'm just wondering, because the Border Water Supply is planning on raising rates because a lot of things going on. So the military may not even take anything into those increases rates.
Well, actually, one of the largest customers of the Border Water Supply is Kaneoki Marine Base.
They gotta reassess more as far as rates because they were one of the drivers behind these rate increases?
No, then the, there's a whole bunch of reasons for the rate increases that are coming up. The Kaneoki Marine Base is going to be assessed the same types of rates with everybody, not anymore.
Okay, thank you. Any other community members? Questions for Border Water Supply? Okay, nothing heard. Thank you, Tracy, for your report.
Thank you. Thank you for your kind attention and happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving to you too. Stadium Authority? Christine?
Hello, Chair Wood, members of the board and members of the community. I'm Chris Kitty Maka from the Department of Accounting and General Services. I'm going to just quickly share screen to get through some of our material very quickly. And let's see. So first, we wanted to share that you can find on our website at nasid.hawaii.gov. That last month, we talked about our market sounding where we gathered information from the industry. Two weeks ago on November 1st, we launched our second market sounding and that's another effort on our part to try to do our best to develop the procurement so that we get all the information and all of our due diligence together. And the request for information from the industry are due tomorrow. So if you want to take a look at what we offered for them to ask about and see the first market sounding report, you can go ahead and check on our website here. I also wanted to share information about the, see if we can get to it, about the Halava Transit Oriented Master Plan. Basically, that's Bill 50 and 51, and I apologize, I'm trying to get to that screen. But if you go to the website, you'll see both the transit oriented development information and the October 18th result of the zoning committee. Basically, they granted an extension to the master plan review and with that extension, the city council has until January 22nd to review the master plan. But what we've heard is that they intend to schedule that for December 1st. That would be a very important meeting for everyone to check out and participate in because it is your ability there to give comments. We're supporting it because that helps us really embrace all of the information you've given us for what you want to see in the community. Once that passes, it'll become zoning and it'll also establish all of the special design district requirements. And last but not least, we want to share our outreach through the newsletter. Our last newsletter was published on October 30th. It incorporates all of the information you gave us. You want to see off of our survey back in September. We were also fortunate to go ahead and give a presentation to the One Water Panel. That's a panel of stakeholders from both city, county, and key private sector entities that help us with wastewater and recycled water initiatives. We're still very serious about trying to incorporate as much as we can for our NESA development. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sammy to give you the latest on what's happening at the stadium. Jeff?
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays. So quick update. The biggest update is you can see our lower Halavelad has been transformed into our fourth annual Holiday Light Show. So our opening night will be November 30th, which will run through December 30th. So it's two part. He'll have the drive through option and then he'll also have the drive through bundle, which allows you to come in and do different activities. I believe this year he has his zip line that he's doing, you know, sound of photos. He's actually doing like a tubing, which is new to us. So we brought it to their attention based on last year with some of the complaints and noise concerns. So as you can see, along Salt Lake Boulevard and part of the canal, they've added 40 foot containers as well as the restrooms. So that's kind of to help kind of, you know, capture that noise level. And we will, of course, be doing all of our noise level monitoring. So if that doesn't work, he can make more adjustments as well. But he has kind of rearranged the way the layout is as well so that it doesn't have that noise that will be traveling because I think when they did their tests, they found, like we had mentioned to them, the noise really does travel in the canal. So that's why they kind of added another 40 foot container there with the restrooms. So hopefully that'll address a lot of the concerns that were brought up last year. But please let us know because, you know, we want to be good neighbors and we want to make sure that everyone is happy. So the light show itself, it's going to run Thursdays, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And then it'll start daily from December 14th through the 30th. Other than that, we have Blood Bank. There will be back on Sunday, December 17th from 8 to 2. If anyone wants to register, everyone can find all the information on our website. Thank you.
Okay, thank you both for your reports. Board members, any questions for Stadium Authority? Okay, is, hey, Chris, is there still, is it still tracking for like demo, you know, 2025? Is that still the target?
Yes, so what I'd like to say is that we're still looking at launching our request proposals exactly a month from now, so December. And what that would do is keep us on track for 2028 completion of the stadium for the UH season. But 2025 would be when we would anticipate executing the contract for the developer to start.
Okay, and is that just the stadium or is that surrounding facilities as well too?
It's going to be one big master agreement for everything, the stadium and the district together.
Got you. Okay, great. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you both as well. Okay. Okay, community members, any questions for Stadium Authority before I move on? Okay, got a question. Go ahead.
Chris, this is Russell Cootie. What exactly was the difference when you went out on this new RFP from the prior one? I know there's something about before you guys separated parts of it was one was the stadium to build, the other part was shopping center.
Yeah, you're exactly correct, Russell. What we were doing the first round was we put out two separate RFPs. One was going to allow a developer to develop the stadium and the separate RFP would be for the real estate. What that entailed was that the state would then be the goal between between both developers. So the Stadium Authority would collect any revenues and ground rents from the real estate developer and use that to offset the cost for financing and O and M for the stadium. Now, what we got from this administration and the legislature was that that was too much risk for the state to take. They didn't want us going in and asking for additional funds to pay those finance agreements and annual payments or for the O and M separately. So now what we did was cancel that procurement and start this new one. It's a unique offering actually, and that is why we're working so closely with the industry where we're going to have one master developer. They take on all the risks to put together a team to put together to build the stadium, operate and maintain it. And they will offset that cost with their own real estate development, generating their revenue and balancing that out. The state would then oversee the entire development through that developer tracking and monitoring the progress and making sure they stay on track. But that's a very good question. That's the difference.
But is there any substantive difference in requirements, big requirements such as so much units of affordable housing or so much units of that, or is it pretty much?
So the overall master plan concept has stayed pretty much the same, completely in compliance with the Halava TOD master plan. But what is shifting obviously because of the delay is the cost and what our dollars can buy. We still have the same $350 million that was appropriated by the state as our skin in the game. But now the challenge is even greater for the developers to make everything balance out. So overall, our desire, our master plan concept is the same. But what we will see the developer produce is going to be what makes it competitive.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, nothing heard. All right, thank you guys for your report.
Mahalo.
Okay, O triple C, Bettina?
Hello, Chair Wood, members of the board, members of the community. I am Bettina Maynard. I am the lead of the O triple C design team. And my announcement is very, very short because I am giving my time to PSD who is present here with Wayne Takara. And they will do a presentation. I noticed on the agenda that there are under board business, so he might opt to do his presentation there. But I am giving my time to another perspective on O triple C. So that concludes everything that I have tonight and all I have to do is wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you, Bettina. I have a question for you. Based on like the updates that are occurring with O triple C, do you think it's, do you think it's wise that we continue to do a monthly report or maybe move you to like a quarterly kind of thing? What do you think?
Can you give me one more? We're hoping to have some news at the beginning of December. And if that comes through as anticipated, you will not be disappointed moving forward.
Okay, great. Okay, how about we do that then? Let's see what shakes out next month and then possibly move you to like a quarterly kind of thing after that.
I hope it's fine.
If things don't change.
I appreciate this. Thank you very much.
By the way, we're in recess next month, so it'll actually be January when we'll do that.
That would be fine.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to hopefully having good news where more action is occurring.
Me too.
Okay, great. Okay, board members, any questions for O triple C? Okay, nothing heard. Okay, community members, any questions for O triple C? Okay, nothing heard. All right, thank you, Bettina. Much appreciated and have a happy holidays.
Thank you very much, YouTube.
Okay, Pearl Ridge Shopping Center, David?
The Chair Wood, members of the board, I have a rather long handout and after reading the room at my last presentation, I am not going to read 20 things again. So there are handouts. I passed out a few, but I would like to highlight just five or six of the items on the handout if I could. The Pearl Ridge addressed holiday train is already set up and is getting ready to run in our Maka Center Court, November 18th through January 7th. We'd have the Light the World Giving Machines back again this year. You may have seen them. It's like a red vending machine where you can use a credit card basically to support a charity within our community. We will start extending, extending shopping hours beginning on Black Friday. The actual Black Friday hours will be 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. On that day, we'll also start photos with Santa. And Santa will be set up in Vai Makai this year and those photos begin Friday, November 24th and run through Sunday, December 24th. Also, just to note that if you have a pet and you want to get your photo with your yes, I met with Carol. Yes, thank you. I will talk about that too. So if you want to get a photo with your pet, we were doing that on Wednesdays from 2:00 to 7:00 PM on November 29th through December 20th. And the Salvation Army Angel Tree and Red Kettle is coming back for this holiday as well. Two quick reminders, the Village Market is still happening every Saturday from 5:00 to 9:00 PM in front of TJ Maxx and we are holding our our Friday night market on December 1st from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. And finally, I'll just mention that our Fuji Restaurant, which is under construction and Uh, restaurant which is under construction in Monterey Bay, we have an anticipated opening date of December first. And so, sir, you just, you just handed me the, um. Uh, Lee, uh, yes, Carol, Carol Lee, uh, that had a concern with our recent, um. Halloween, um, concert. I met with Carol last week for two hours. Actually, we had coffee. And, uh, spent a rather enjoyable time. Only about fifteen minutes actually of the concert, got a chance to know, know one another. I think there were two concerns that came in, Carol and actually Carol's neighbor Pamela. But, um, we had a great discussion. I think we're kind of on the same page. And happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you, David. Um, board members, any questions for Pearl Ridge Shopping Center? Okay, one most question, go ahead.
I just want to follow up on the giving tree, sorry, the giving machines. This Saturday is the opening. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah, the kickoff is this Saturday, uh, at Vai Makai at ten AM.
Well, it's many AM.
That is the kind of kickoff ceremony. Hope to see you there.
I'm volunteering.
Oh, beautiful, great. Well, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from board members? All right, community members, any questions for Pearl Ridge Shopping Center? You're not ready, you're not let go yet. Okay, um, hey, David, can, can you and I talk offline about this particular incident? I, actually, I'd like to come down and take a look at the whole situation. Yeah, so when. Yeah, yeah, let's, let's talk offline and set up a time for me to come down and take a look at. And what this entails because, um, uh, it, it sounds like it's not the first time. It sounds like this is a reoccurring issue. And so, um, usually similar to situation like with the stadium, right? Came up with solutions that, that really resolved the, the noise complaints that, that were happening in Halava and Crown Point. Or, um, yeah, Crown Point, I think it is, and a few other locations around the stadium. So we might be able to, might be able to resolve this with, you know. Reasonable solution, solutions going forward, so.
Sounds great.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, uh, moving forward, US Navy and Department of Defense. Okay, there was a flurry of emails that were sent out from Beck earlier, so I don't know why he's not here, but. Any other representatives from the US Navy? Okay, nothing heard. We'll move on. Uh, EPA. Okay, nothing heard. And DOT.
Good evening, uh. Let me share my screen here. Can you folks see the screen here? Okay, good evening, Chair Woods, members of I N A Wood Board. Casey Oliver from the State DOT Highway Division. At last month's meeting, there was a concern about the overgo to weeds in the meeting area along Warner Freeway. Near Chippewa Hospital. The Highway Division has an ongoing highway lighting project and we are working with our contractor. Q E infrastructure west to remove the overgo by this week. Uh, the line project started in March of twenty twenty-two with an anticipated completion date of October twenty twenty-four. Uh, the project's approximately seventy percent completed. Uh, project scope includes replacing existing highway lighting with new LED lighting standards. And place in existing median landscaping with new concrete glare screens. There will be no new median landscaping when the project completed. The total construction cost is approximately seventeen million dollars. I want to thank Senator Elefante for notifying the Highway Division on Thursday, November second about a homeless family leaving. Uh, on Kahela Street under the H one fire duck, our departmental homeless coordinator worked with our contractor to move the family the following week. Also like to thank, uh, Mike from Central Elefante Office for his November eight email about graffiti on Kahela Street under the H one fire duck. Where the homeless family was living. We, I did a quick field investigation team and our Wauwau Dishing Maintenance covered up the graffiti. That concludes my report. I can take any questions at this time.
Hey, thank you and much appreciated about the graffiti. Uh, yeah, I noticed that along Salt Lake Boulevard, so, uh, really appreciate that. Yeah, somebody had, uh, just, just as a little thing, but the spelling on some of the words was not correct, so I appreciate. Okay, uh, um, I do have one question for you though. So I was talking with the Chair of Pearl City about the U-turns along Cam Highway. I, I thought that you guys had mentioned that you were going to install one U-turn, but the Chair over there at Pearl City said that, that has been put on hold. Is that true?
Uh, no, uh, we're planning to put a, a U-turn at, uh, Hale Mualu too.
Okay.
Entrance. And for passenger vehicles only. I know the Proceeding the Road Board wanted, um, uh, U-turn at the Hiko Power Plant, but, um. I asked, I mentioned it and they would have to probably write a letter to our director.
Okay.
Seeing for the change and mention to them that maybe if you both work together and get, um, support from the. Local businesses and public, that'll help.
Okay, yeah, we can do that. Okay. All right, yeah, he didn't really, he just said that there was a hold on one of, okay. I got it now. Okay, I'll, I'll reach out to Larry and talk to him. Thank you. Um, board members, any questions for DOT? Okay, nothing heard. Community members, any questions for DOT? Okay, I got a question. Go ahead. We're not hearing any audio online, by the way.
Hey, Chair Wood, this is Logan. Uh, I just wanted to let you know that there's no in-person questions, uh, for Casey, but Victor did, uh. Victor is here for his report now.
Okay, we'll, we'll go ahead and have Navy brief then. Thank you. All right, sir, thank you for your report. Much appreciate you for your attendance, by the way, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice Thanksgiving.
And if you can, just tell your crew that they did a very good job, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on, um, Navy.
We have a question from Gartner online.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry for the late question, um, I just thought of it, but it was for the DOT. Uh, thank you for reporting and you mentioned, um. Having noticed about homeless, the underpass and you folks were able to address that, so. Uh, is that something that is part of your department or? Public can also, uh, bring that to your attention to help address certain, uh, homeless concerns?
Well, for us, we try to, um, not have any homeless live within our DOT right away. When we do find, uh, homeless living in our right of way, we try to have our homeless coordinator work with the homeless. And we throw them to, um, you know, shelters. Uh, but we can't arrest them or anything, only the police can. But, uh, we try to ensure that they, we don't have any homeless within our right of way, especially under the fire ducts and stuff.
Uh, okay, so right of way meaning, um, streets and thoroughfares?
Yeah, within the state highways, yeah, right of way, so like under fire duct or under bridges.
Okay, okay, all right. I appreciate you clarifying that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir, for your report. Much appreciated. Uh, Navy, Vic.
Hi, Chair, Ward. Sorry, I'm lacking. I sent in a written report earlier, uh, to Logan and to Chair. Uh, I'm going to do a reduced version to save time. The first part, uh, dealing with Red Hill and water quality. Uh, as of today, we, uh, removed ninety-three million gallons of fuel, so. Mike, you were ahead of schedule. So far, so good. The other stuff is, um, uh. Where's Steve?
Steve is not there.
Oh, I'll make, if you can share that report with, with the board, that would save a lot of time.
I'm sending it right now. So, okay, but I would appreciate if you could like a couple days in advance would be good, so.
I'll, I'll let P A O know.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
As far as the updates for Pearl Harbor, um, the, on October twenty-fifth, students from the. O'Guiney Elementary School in Nakaoka, uh, visited Pearl Harbor. Uh, Nakaoka is the sister city of Honolulu and we welcome the children and show them around. Uh, October twenty-eighth, Navy volunteers, um, cleaned up parts of the bike path. The part over here, uh, was at the IAS State Recreational Park, uh, near the boathouse and. The road along there, so everything went well. Tons of rubbish was picked up. And coming up soon on November eighteenth, the Navy will host along with the. Awau Council of Hawaiian Civic Clubs and the Native Hawaiian Societies, our Makahiki. We're going to party at the A-frame adjacent from Rainbow Marina and it's all free, open to the public. Please come, check it out. That's all I have. Are there any questions?
All right, board members, any questions for Navy? Okay, nothing heard. Community, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hey, Casey, can we please stop carrying your screen? Casey, if you can hear me, can you can stop carrying your screen, please? Chair, we can, uh, keep going with, uh, community questions. I don't think there's any board questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, board, community members, any questions for the Navy?
No question. Are the water quality in Pearl Harbor?
Yep.
Is it kind of clean or is it toxic? Here's what I'm asking. My neighbor, he catches, uh, salmon crab. The one day I asked him where he got it from, it maybe tastes him good. He says catches it from Pearl Harbor. But is it edible if you get it from in there?
Well, there's signs posted on don't fish and eat the fish, but I know plenty people do. I have family that does. What they do is they, they put the fish or the crab in cleaner water for a while and then that's how they purge it. But nobody should be eating anything from Pearl Harbor. Their sign is posted.
So as far as testing that water, are they tested on a regular basis or they just tested it like several years in a row?
No, it's tested on a regular basis. Um, we're under, uh, the Department of Health's regulations. And results are set in and areas where there's a stream like Halav, like Halava Stream. Way Malu Stream, Pearl City Stream, those areas show, uh, a higher rate of, uh, contaminants. As compared to other parts of Pearl Harbor.
What kind of contaminants are you?
I have the water quality report and I'm willing to share that with you at, at the meeting. I brought it with me. But those streams run by Abe's Auto, Recycle, Pearl City Auto. Through private property and some, uh, public property as well. And so that's where they're taking their readings from. Whatever be the case, we, um, do our best to test the waters and work with our federal and state partners to. Get on top of it, keep it clean.
So it is monitored if the level is getting higher or?
Yeah, and the results are posted on a, on a website and that's why I can show you. I brought the one, one part of the question with me, so. Look at them and, and any questions? Nobody's hiding nothing. If I don't have the answer, I'll point you in the right direction where you can get the answer. But I, I, I'll show you the stuff after my.
The crab is good.
Yeah.
Drink it.
So, uh, Vic, that, that, that kind of acts, actually makes me ask a question. So you said Pearl Harbor has like signs posted about not eating any, um, fish or, or, um. Shellfish or any of that out of the harbor, right?
There's warning signs. There is warning signs posted, uh, e- especially areas by the streams.
Okay, so is there warning signs on the streams?
Um, yeah, where the streams dump out into Pearl.
The reason why I asked this, the reason why I asked this is because I know by the bridge over by Makalapa. Um, over there, there is no, there is no warning signs. There's, and there's always somebody trying to catch crab out of there.
Yeah, correct. And also there's a homeless encampment under that has to be cleared out. And, um, areas where there's homeless encampments, you're going to notice higher rates of contaminants. Because that's just how it is. So we understand all that. If you look Ma- Makai of the bridge. You're going to see, uh, um, this, this floating barrier to catch contempt of. Lighter than water contaminants before it flows and we do periodic skimming. But again, it's a collaborative between the feds, the state and the city. We stay on top of it, stay Makaala and. When we see bad stuff, we, we address it. We, we don't turn away from it.
Do you think Navy can get with, I don't know if it's city or state. Uh, when it comes to the bridges across, that cross Halava Stream at Cam Highway and at Salt Lake Boulevard. And post signage saying do not fish or catch crabs.
And I'll go check it out too, Steve. I mean. No, I'll check it out. I know that they're doing a lot of roadwork on Kamehameha. And, uh, over the Halava Stream, maybe some of the signage got removed, but I'll check it out and I'm writing it down. I'll get with our environmental folks. It is done. That's all there is to it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, we're not asking for much, just some signs saying, hey, caution, do not, you know. Okay, I got a hand raised. Go ahead.
Chair, some of the, um, environmental impact things are covered by the RAB, Pearl Harbor Hickam Rad. And, um, well, I'm going to report later on, on that.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. All right, Logan, anybody else?
Well, just picking off of what Francis brought up, we're working to bring back the Pearl Harbor Restoration Advisory Board. And the guy is setting that up now. It's easier said than done. Yeah, so.
Stay tuned.
Yeah.
Okay, Logan?
Just real quick, is it possible to get a copy, an electronic copy of the water quality reports to the board?
Yeah, well, I'm kind of old school. That's why I printed it out. Yeah, maybe you can snapshot it and whatever works, Danielle, it's, the reports are out there and let's make it work. Yeah. But I'm writing that down too. Okay.
Okay, all right, uh, board members, any other questions? Okay, community members, any other questions? Okay, thanks, Vic. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it. Always, always great to have you. So, okay, let's. Yeah, happy Thanksgiving. Um, okay, we'll go ahead and move on to board business. Um, I, I added this wildfire prevention efforts for Pearl City and I A. Um, I think we talked a little bit about it with, uh, with HFD already. They're going to come back. But is there anybody else that wants to say anything or talk about anything in regards to that prior to the next meeting with HFD? If not, I'm, I'll move on. Okay, we have a question. Go ahead.
Hey, Chair, this is Logan. Not a question. I just wanted to let you know there is, uh, something in the mayor's report this month from, uh, HFD.
Okay, so I guess Haku would brief that or what?
Yeah, it'll come up in their, in a Haku's report later on.
Okay, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and move. Okay, let's go ahead and move on then. Alternative models for O-triple-C in the community-based continuum of care. Kathy, I think you're in attendance, correct? Okay, welcome to our board. Much appreciated. Sorry I couldn't stay there in person with you. I just don't want to get anybody sick, so let's go ahead and I turn over the floor to you. Thank you for you guys' presentation, by the way.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair members and members in the audience here. I'm Tommy Johnson, the Director of the Department of Public Safety. I just wanted to go over a few talking points real quick about the O-triple-C project, and I'll turn everything over to Kathy Shah from the UH School of Community Design. UH Center, excuse me, the UH Community Design Center. I'll get it right. Sorry, I'm getting overcooled myself. So, real quick, Public Safety reached out to the UH to provide additional stakeholder and community engagement for O-triple-C project. And engagement builds on and does not replace the work done by the architects Hawaiians. And engagement encompasses not just O-triple-C, but development of community-based continuum of care, mental health, substance treatments, housing, and trauma issues. And we acknowledge that the jail and system redesign needs to go hand in hand. And that's why we're taking this long effort and approach to make sure we get as much community input and involvement as possible, given the cost of the facility, the projected cost of the facility, and also that it will have to be in operation for quite some time. We're pleased with the different forms of engagement, including UH reaching out to incarcerated persons, reaching out to persons newly released from prison, their family members, and for community support as well. PSD is pleased to partner with the UH, with UH, who recently helped us host a symposium last about... that put agencies and individuals together to discuss justice-involved issues. We're eager for feedback from the I.A. Hawaii community and the system as a whole. As we shift from the Department of Public Safety to the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation, we're doing a complete paradigm shift from what some would see as a punitive incarceration model to one that is really centered on evidence-based programming, reentry, and holistic services. With that said, I'll turn it over to Kathy Shah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Aloha and good evening, Chair Wood, members of the board, members of the community. Thanks so much for giving us some space and time tonight to speak with you all. My name, as Director Johnson said, is Kathy Hoshar. I am an associate professor and the Director of the Community Design Center, and I'm here as one of three professors that are leading this project with PSD. I want to say that it means a lot to us to have the Director Johnson here, Deputy Director Kenon Nose, and Tracy Fernandes here. They've given us nothing but their full and wholehearted support for this project. It's nice for me to be here as well. I grew up in I.A. at Waialua Elementary School. My doctor's office is in the I.A. Medical Building. And I wanted to have three of our team members introduce themselves very briefly, and they're gonna do a lot of presenting. So, Caroline?
My name is Caroline Witzel. I am the community social worker with UH CDC, and I have both my bachelor and my master of social work. And I was raised in Arizona. It's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you, Caroline.
I think you're on mute.
Let's see, Dean, can you unmute? Oh, I sort of see him.
Hey, Dean, this is Logan. You're unmuted, but we're not picking up any microphone input from you right now.
Okay, maybe in the interim, let's see if... Kresha, does your audio work?
Hello?
Yeah.
We can hear you. My name is Kresha Lai Allen. I'm currently a research associate at UH CDC, born and raised on the island of Ko'oui, and I have my Doctor of Architecture degree. Pleasure to meet all of you.
All right, fantastic. We'll try to go back to Dean quickly. Uh-oh. Okay, we can't hear you. So the other two, we might have to make up for that. But we'll go ahead and get started. So, thanks so much. We're talking about our project. All of us, as they mentioned, we're all coming from the University of Ko'oui Community Design Center. So it's a teaching practice, kind of like a teaching hospital, except we do engagement, we do planning, design. We gather the resources of the university, so we're a platform that brings together architecture, landscape architecture, planning, social work, public health, Hawaiian studies. We get all those resources. We grab our faculty, we have a full-time staff, and we have students, and we work on projects that serve the community. So, we have our three members, three of our team. We have a large team on this project we're gonna share with you tonight. All right, go for it.
So, as previously mentioned, our team is led by Kathy Hoshar, as well as Lauren DeRiley from the Thompson School of Social Work and Public Health and School of Hawaiian Knowledge, and Dan Mills from the Department of Urban and Regional Planning and the Matsonaga Peace Institute. We also have a dedicated and diverse group of staff and students from all these departments supporting this project. So, our work is tied to the longer planning and design process related to the relocation of O-triple-C and the site selection, master plan, and programming work by AHL. UH CDC's additional proof-of-concept research, engagement, and design studies will add to this to inform the development of a RFP that will be issued to select a team to design and construct a new facility. UH CDC is not the professional team responsible for developing the RFP for a new jail or responding to an RFP for a new jail. So, we have a list of goals and objectives for this project, which include to engage with diverse stakeholders, research restorative justice models, consult with peer facilities, share knowledge, develop proof-of-concept designs, and draft the guideline document for future requests for proposal. So, our engagement follows two threads. We are engaging stakeholders about alternatives for a new jail, and we are also engaging stakeholders about strengthening a community-based continuum of care because the two are inversely related. There is a call to take a more holistic approach and to examine the system in conjunction with a new jail. So, our engagement approach centers around the incarcerated individual. We started with incarcerated or furloughed individuals or newly released individuals to hear from them directly. Then we engage their families and direct service providers and support. We are only now reaching out to the general public, and we are starting with I.A. Halava. We understand that the new jail will impact your community directly. Our skills of engagement range from individual and group talk stories to larger community events in order to respond to the different people, needs, and contexts. So this is our team at the Halava Correctional Facility, learning from nine men who were thoughtful and reflective about their experiences. They provided insights about life skills, job skills, incentives, and experiences that might support the rehabilitation.
Our team also, can you guys hear me? Awesome. Our team also visited Habilitat, a long-term residential treatment facility, and Makana Okeakua, a reentry facility for men, and YDBC Fernhurst, a residential transitional facility for women. In the two men's facilities, eighty-two-hundred percent of the people we spoke to had been through jail and/or prison, or both. And in order to encourage conversation and sharing, the team conducted many hands-on activities, including sorting, dot-voting, brainstorming, and group conversations. And we have also visited various health centers and providers, including Kukua Kalihiki Valley, Keire Hawaii's Palakana and Kua Hali Stabilization Center, as well as Waialua Health Center. They helped us to understand different models of community and cultural health, and they offered important insights about health-related prevention programs that help to care for individuals and deflect them from the criminal justice system. We also went back to Habilitat to follow up with the residents and to engage them in a co-design workshop related to the system, site, and building design. We learned so much from their candid conversations with us. And going back to the people we've engaged, this as part of our engagement strategy, many of these individuals were the first time we visited. We hope to engage the I.A. community in the same way.
We've conducted over one hundred talk stories with individuals, family members, and direct supporters. We're grateful for the opportunity to talk story with Chair Wood for speaking with us earlier this year. During these conversations, we found that there was a lot of alignment. However, there was less awareness of what everyone else was doing. People talked about the need to break down silos, to facilitate collaboration across public agencies and with community organizations. This prompted us to plan and host a first-ever Breaking Psycho Symposium, sponsored by PSD and core organized by us at UH, Ko'oui Correctional System Oversight Commission, Correctional Reform Working Group, and the Governor's Office. On stage, you see Tia Hartsock, the Director of Office of Wellness and Resilience, Laura Thielen from Partners in Care, Mike Lambert from Honolulu Police Department, Rebecca Light from the Ko'oui Prosecutor's Office, as well as Ashley Sheer from Queens Care Coalition. It was a two-day forum that gathered eighty different agencies and organizations. The focus was not on the jail or O-triple-C, but rather the overlapping cycles of mental health needs, substance abuse disorders, houselessness, joblessness, trauma, and incarceration. This was a border conversation that aimed to bring people together to address these issues as a collective. So the symposium partners actually came together out of an interest in bringing Amen to Hawaii. Amen is an organization run out of UCSF that works with correctional institutions to change the correctional culture using a public health approach and focusing on employee well-being first. The two-day symposium focused on correctional culture on day one and diversion and reentry on day two. PSD attended other workshops on the other days. Importantly, very different people came together acknowledging a shared goal. You can see Dean John Osorio from Ko'oui Nuiakea School of Hawaiian Knowledge opening the symposium with a song, Governor Green to his right, and a few images of the workshop that was a part of the event. We were pleased to see that people were genuinely excited about coming together. They felt empowered and encouraged by the collaborations brought about from the symposium. So this is our current timeline. We're looking forward to our broader community engagement. We hope to host a workshop in I.A. Halava in January. In the spring, we plan to return to stakeholders to share our findings and collect a second round of feedback. And the late summer of 2024, we will present and submit our report to PSD. In addition to sharing with you and gathering your general feedback, we would also appreciate your input on how we can best meet your needs and to do this at your convenience. For example, if there are days of the week, times, locations, or formats that work better for all of you, we plan, we plan this around, we hope to plan this around with your preferences. Again, thank you so much for your time and opportunity to speak with all of you, and also to Bettina for giving some of her time to our team as well. And I'll pass it on back to Kathy.
From our team, we have some websites that people can go to to access information about our project, EngageKo'oui.org. It'll take you to our project. The symposium was a kind of separate thing because that was partnered with a number of other organizations. So there's also a symposium website, Breaking Cycle Symposium. And if you just want to know who the heck we are, what are we... If you don't know you, you can go to our website. You can see how we bring together the resources of the university to support projects like these. So, thank you so much.
Welcome. Interesting.
Okay. Okay. Does that conclude your guys' brief?
That concludes our presentation, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board members, any questions? Or the presenters tonight? Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah. I just hope that with all the groups that you have at your symposium, which is very nice idea, that you don't forget about the victims in the community that suffer from the hands of people who commit crime after crime after crime. So it's nice to have a bunch of smiling faces, but the victims in our community from these career criminals, they don't have smiling faces. So please make sure that their viewpoint, their safety, their mental health, their public health is taken into consideration.
We actually want direct concrete feedback on planning this in January. So if there's something that would be more convenient, a place like it here at the library, you'd rather we do something else that piggybacked on another event? We're completely open. We don't want is to ask people to come and participate in something that is just combo for everybody. So, please feel free to reach out.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think, I think that probably the library might be a good central point for I.A. Yeah. I know that a lot of meetings get conducted like at Pearl Ridge Elementary, but that would be Pearl Ridge, so... But I don't necessarily know if the library could accommodate the amount of people that might show up for this. So, you might want to think maybe one of the elementary schools or the high schools, see if you can coordinate with one of the principals over there. I think Senator Elafonte has a lot of the contact information for those principals over there, so you might want to take a look at one of those locations.
It's right behind us. Thank you.
Okay. Speaking of that, though, have you guys, in terms of communicating that you're actually doing this, how do you plan on going about that? Because a lot of times, is it gonna be a mailer? Is it gonna be canvassing the neighborhood? I mean, how do you, how do you plan on doing that?
Yeah, no, you know, usually we'll do a postcard mailing. We'll put some posters up. We'll try to put things into people's newsletter letters, so we'll email the council members, the representatives, you know, everybody who's putting things out.
And we can put together a news release and provide it to the neighborhood board as well for dissemination.
Okay, great.
But it'll come through in multimedia to try to make it accessible to everybody.
Okay, outstanding. Thank you. Okay. Board members, any other questions? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. Community members, any questions for the presenters? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. I really appreciate you spending the time and taking the opportunity to present what, you know, the information that you did. As somebody who was like... We've been hearing a lot about O-triple-C for, well, since I've been on the board. And, and I'm hoping that, like I had mentioned with Bettina earlier, that there will be some good news going forward. There'll be more either budgetary action or some kind of fiscal action that will allow progress to occur. But I think that the approach that you guys are taking seems sound, and it seems the right path. You know, the Stadium Authority did similar situation, right? And I think that was a success as well, you know? You know, so, so, yeah. I have, thank you. Thank you for all the work that you guys are doing, and look forward to seeing you guys in January, so... Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. We're gonna talk the 2023 CUP25 Group Living Facility Halava Care Home update. So as you well know, there was a... This is the senior care home that is gonna be included in a residential area. That permit was passed. I was asked to put this on the agenda. Tracy, if you want to talk about anything, please, the floor is yours.
Kind of disappointed if some of the members from that area are right now present in our board meeting room right now. If you kind of give them a little bit of background of like... Because I have been privy to some of the emails that we had after this permit was approved, so if you can maybe give a little...
Yeah, so, so I think there was some restrictions, though, wasn't there? In regards to that permit, it wasn't... It wasn't approved in the way it was submitted. I think there was some restrictions added to it. I really don't have anything else to say about it outside of that. That's all I know about it. I know that we submitted our concerns. They took those into consideration. They actually delayed that vote for a month to garner everybody's input. And I do think they took those inputs into consideration because of the restrictions that they did put eventually on it. I think they reduced down the number, if I remember correctly. But, but correct me if I'm wrong there.
I don't remember seeing that.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm not sure if, Mr. Chairman, if you guys actually have that email that was forwarded to us? Did I send it to you guys in regards to whether or not what the restrictions were or what the actual... If I, did I send it to you guys in regards to whether or not, um, what the restrictions were, what the actual permit outline? If I didn't send it to you guys, I'll make sure I can send it to you folks. Did I send it to you before? Did I send it to you guys?
Yeah, yeah.
That, that, well, that thing came from DPP?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, I don't really recall. They actually limited the amount of rooms and things like that, so.
I don't think there was.
There wasn't, yeah? Why do we call that, right?
There were no restrictions.
Well, the only thing I know that came out of this that was some silver lining was that because the applicant wasn't quite forthright with everyone, uh, measure has been submitted thanks to council member Cordero and council member um Dos Santos Tam, that now is gonna have some penalties with someone who puts in a permit application and is not truthful.
But that's after the fact, right?
Yeah, but it's, it's something that's gonna continue to go forward from now. I mean, it wasn't there before, but because of the situation, you know, applicants who come after that is gonna be under much more greater scrutiny to make sure that they're honest and.
I'm really, I'm, I'm sorry, Tracy, but I'm really sorry what happened to you guys. I really am. Because I think that's a travesty of what happened to you guys. This person not supposed to have been, get this permit. That's, that's really bad. We could undo that. I wish we could. Because whoever went, gave her that, that's pilaw. I don't know. That is Tracy. That's, I'm sorry, Steve, but.
No, no, you're fine. You're fine. I, I, I agree with you actually. Um, Representative, or I'm sorry, uh, Councilwoman Cordero, is there a way for us to like file a, I don't know, grievance or some?
Grievance or something to help these people?
An appeal?
Appeal. Is there an appeal process or something that we can do for these, this um residents? Because they went through the process. And this lady blatantly lied when she came in front of this board. And to get her to get, and now she's probably laughing all her, you know? And I, I'm sorry, I feel sorry for these people because they went through the process. And this lady lied. Is there a way, a way that we can help them?
I think that's a great question, and I think that's why it was really important. And I think, um, for member Akaki for showing up to the actual hearing. Um, I think, um, especially the first hearing, because that's where majority of the testimony was heard. And I know that a lot of the residents on that street did provide that, actually well before the hearing, actually, yeah. And so, um, unfortunately, like, you know, the, the board, as I won't say autonomous from, from my type of decision-making at the legislative branch, um, but the same, um, I won't say process, but the same uh division that issued it is, is who you can, who we can still go to. Um, it's the same email and phone number that I provided in the two meeting minutes ago. Meeting minutes, two meetings ago, as well as um the public hearing notice for that DPP public hearing. Um, and then as it moves forward, um, yes, after the fact, you know, with the false statements and everything, that is something that will then occur. Um, we'll be able to, I guess, strip the um permits, but also uh incur a lot of fines. So however, we do need to have that bill heard. Um, it, that's why, uh, as you saw, I, I hopefully you all saw my, my letter to you all along with Councilmember Dos Santos Tam, so that we can move it forward. Um, and so, uh, DPP can immediately start working on those fines. So first, um, to recap, as again, the same information that I provided, email and phone number that I provided to you, that's why it was super important to have people come out to that hearing. And then also, um, thereafter, getting us, getting that bill passed and then getting those things stripped. But once again, that is after the fact. You're absolutely correct.
It's after the member's basket.
But I think, um, yeah.
So what you're saying, so what you're saying is, is uh, if this bill passes, there'll be, there'll be a way for us to go, or a way for the process to go back and retroactively strip somebody of their permit?
Um, at this moment, yes, and that's what we were talking about, and that's why we also wanted feedback from all of you when we did send that letter to the name. Um, uh, of course, I sent it to all of my other neighborhood boards, but of course, wanting to hear it, especially from you all. As I know that, uh, we have many neighbors that, um, have, have, um, neighbors that have other neighbors that have already permits, um, and that need to, that have falsified such, such records and permitting, um, plans, I would say. Yes.
I got another question. Uh, so is there an appeal process right now that is available? Is there an appeal process that is available?
Yeah, there, I mean, do that, do that same email, because currently it was just approved, right?
Right.
So, but as it moves forward, then I would have to find out exactly who else we would have to go to. But, um, as I was, um, informed of that same email and the public hearing.
Because, you know, talking to the, the residents of the area, there are some concerns because that notice that was opened on the residence hall, none of these folks were able to attend because I don't know if it was a honest mistake or what, but they couldn't attend online. I don't know anything else, because when they tried to, it was a wrong address that was on top of there. And then the notice of the new date wasn't put up until the day before. And a lot of these folks who tried to submit testimony when they spoke to DPP were supposed to normally, the testimonies should go to the DPP portal. They told them, you don't need to submit testimonies, and then an email addressed directly to one of the DPP agents was given instead of the DPP portal. So there's a lot of inconsistency here now. It's not that sense that something might have, shenanigans might have been going on.
Well, first off, um, I'm not sure about the actual uh thing or uh notice that was put up by the home.
Yeah.
Um, however, they do have to post it uh six, eight days. I'm actually not sure. Probably even longer than that. Um, in the star advertiser, which is where I was able to get that information. Um, I was able to go on to the actual hearing, which is why I was able to see you
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, in, in person over there. So thank you again. Um, but nonetheless, uh, that, those work. So I think if it was the same notice, um, I, I can't speak for what the notes are, I'm sorry. But as for the consistency, I can follow up on that and come back to the board January 9th, I think. And also tell the neighbors.
They, they were, I mean, it was kind of, I was the one who showed up at their very first hearing, and all the folks were there, so. I kind of sent them an email after they lit a fire under their bus, and now everybody came out to the same.
No, I understand. No, I did the same with, um, Chair Wood. I was actually very concerned that it was just you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, hey Tracy, uh, thank you, thank you, Ms. Cordero. Much appreciated. Um, Tracy, can you take point on this one for me? Because I'm gonna be traveling probably in a couple of weeks, uh, for a week. Um, and I will not be able to, up until that point, I, I just got a lot on my plate, so.
For sure.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then how about we revisit this in January? And hopefully that will be the last time we do it. Or if we can move it to the Community Relations section, or maybe even the Planning and Zoning section. If we can move it under those, that would be ideal. Okay, I see a hand raised.
That is right now? That Bill 44, I believe, is called, right? Um, what is the status of that right now at this point?
Um, we have, have to go through the next committee here, that adoption. Um, I'll bring all that, but I'll, I'll, I'll send that to Margaret.
Hey, Chair Wood, this is Logan. We have a community member that would like to, uh, provide some testimony as well. That's okay.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Yeah, just for reference, but the public hearing, we actually took a picture of them posting um information.
Councilmember Cordero, he has the, um, do you want to look at it?
Can you, can you email that to us? Mr. Chang, I'm gonna email Anderson, Chair's address. Yeah, Mr. Chang. Now, if you can forward it to us, that'll be very appreciated. So you put everything on the. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments about this? Okay, all right, nothing heard. All right, uh, we'll move on. Um, I also added this to the agenda. It's the use of the board funds. Um, so, uh, we had a council chairs recently, and it was discussed in there about, I think, how much is it, Logan? A thousand dollars, I think we have? So I would, um, all I'm asking for the board is from now until our next meeting is to come up with some ideas on how to um utilize those funds. I, um, I was thinking possibly using them as a scholarship type situation or uh some other way to, that would benefit the community uh in some form or fashion. So, so, um, if you have an idea, you know, let us know, and then we will put it up to vote at the next board meeting. Anybody have any questions, concerns, comments about that?
I got a question. Is, is that even possible, using the board funds to do something of that nature?
Logan?
Yeah, so just to give some context, uh, the funds are not for the board to, uh, necessarily like give it to someone else, like it's a scholarship. The board funds, the thousand dollars allocated are generally used for you guys to do outreach in your community, whether that's the board members doing a uh walking in the Christmas parade, whether that's doing a community cleanup, whether that's, uh, you guys, you know, um, taking part in the farmers market with like a tent and, uh, it's really supposed to be about public outreach and getting more community members to realize the forum that you guys have as a way for them to talk to their representative, a way for them to bring their concerns forward in their community.
Hmm.
Something like, uh, a third-party scholarship to where it sounds great on paper. And, you know, if it was up to me, I mean, I wouldn't care how you guys used it, but, uh, yeah, something like that. I don't, I just don't think it would be, uh, approved by, uh, my office.
Yeah, it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't solid.
Okay, okay, fair enough. I'll, I'll, I'll back down off of that one. Um. Uh, okay, but yeah, so just like what Logan said, you know, think of some of the things that we could utilize that for, for community outreach. Um, and some events or whatever that, that would be out there. Okay?
I got a question, like what about newsletters? Can that be used towards like a community-wide newsletter? Because we used to do that before back in the day, so under Chair Clark, and we should, you know, he would solicit that, you know, subjects from members of the board that is important to their sub-districts and whatever like that. So if that's something that we can utilize it for as well possibly?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, like I said, I don't know off the top of my head. I haven't heard that idea tossed around before by another board, but, um, I would just urge you guys to be timely with it, just because the, the funds are limited. Um, I'm not sure, there's like a set timeline.
Bless you.
Yeah, if you guys want something to, you look into by my office, I'm more than willing to, uh, take back any of your ideas, and I can run them by my superiors and get back to you guys.
If you can get one of them as possible?
Like a newsletter, like, you know, like a mailer.
What, do you have, do you have what other boards have, are doing with theirs?
Uh, so yeah, that's the thing is, uh, it's the reason we're kind of backing off of uh allowing the funds, just because there hasn't been a lot of usage, um, of the funds. Mostly, uh, to this point, it's been used for, uh, board participation in Christmas parades, like I mentioned. Uh, I think there's probably half a dozen to maybe close to ten boards that are taking part in their local, uh, Christmas parades, uh, coming up in the late November, early December. And then, um, some other things would just be, yeah, like, you know, I know that uh, one board, I think it might have been Pearl City, don't, don't quote me on that, but I think they did like a recognition, like they uh, gave some like, basically some things of recognition to, uh, community members that were of the kids or something like that. But any ideas you guys have, I would just recommend that pass it along to me, so I can pass them along to
Okay.
Getting approved possibly.
So cleanups, we like, we could use the funds for like garbage bags and things like that, basically.
Um, for garbage bags.
If we're gonna do a cleanup.
Yeah.
We could go get things like garbage bags, water for the water.
Absolutely. And I guess we're gonna decide as a board to take action and, you know, like a good number of you guys can do something like that, then that would be a great thing for you guys to, you know, advocate, say that you're doing this in the community, and also to, yeah, of course, to, to, uh, set those funds aside to make it happen.
So my thought was, um, for committees, I know that the the NCO doesn't support the committees. We only do the monthly meeting. You know, you, you help us with the, who hosts the monthly meeting with the video support and all that. But for having committee meetings, which needs to be public, can we have a subscription to like Zoom or something that board members can use to host our meetings?
Um, so if you guys ever want to have a committee meeting, like a actual, um, a formal committee meeting where you submit an agenda to the office, um, you guys are more than willing to use my WebEx account. You would just, because I'm gonna be the one that's mailing out your, uh, agenda anyways, right? So I'm more than willing to generate the meeting link for you, the password, and I'll make it to where I don't need to be present for you to run the meeting. I can basically schedule it and then hand you the information so that way you're able to run it through WebEx.
That's, we all would have to be familiar with WebEx versus other platforms.
Uh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I would hope so. I would be, I'm worried for sure.
We have more on that, I think.
Yeah, and I'm always willing to give pointers. Like, like I said, it's, it's super simple. You can do it one time and, I mean, you guys know, I haven't been around that long, but I, you know, run your meetings, I think, okay. So I'd be more than willing to help you guys out with your committees going.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, um, yeah, so I heard some cleanups. I heard, uh, Tracy talk about mailers and newsletter kind of stuff. Um, so let's, um, let's get all those, some of those ideas together, and we can talk about it the next meeting in January. Uh, any other discussions about the board funds? Okay, nothing heard. Okay, uh, moving on to the Aleo Lepio, Lepia? Look, man, I can't even say Lepia. Affordable Housing Development.
So Le Poa Chair.
Le Poa.
Le Poa, there we go. Okay, thank you.
Let me make sure I can share my screen here.
That's a big one. Yeah, it's big. Got the email. What is that?
Okay, Aloha Chair, members of the board, Senator Elafonte, Councilmember Cordero, and members of the community. Uh, my name's Keegan Flaherty. I'm presenting tonight on a project, uh, Halei Olipoa with my dad, Chris Flaherty. It's a new affordable rental housing project, um, right in Aia. Giving you a brief look at our development company, Ekenaka Development. We have a track record of developing over two thousand residential units. Uh, much of our success has come from utilizing funding from the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program to the State of Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation, HHFTC. We've developed and owned several affordable housing developments across the state. We've completed the Non-Aquatic Build Center in 2019, as well as Halei Makana O Maile in 2020, out on the Leeward Coast. Uh, we most recently completed Halei Makana O Maile this year, which was a hundred percent affordable rental community, uh, for Kupuna. This slide shows the project's location on the Poa Place, next to the Pearl Kai Shopping Center. The project's in, uh, within close proximity to the Pearl Ridge rail station, and it's in the TOD Special District, which was established to promote new developments close to the rail line. The underlying zoning is for BMX three, and, uh, we plan on constructing a hundred and fifty-three units of affordable rental housing for, uh, Kamaaina individuals and families that, uh, will be held as affordable rentals for sixty-one years. Uh, the building will contain a mix of studios, one, two, and three-bedroom units. We'll have a unit set aside for an onsite manager. Uh, in addition uh to having an open-air courtyard, we'll have a community resource center, ninety-four bike stalls, a hundred and fifty vehicle parking stalls, and views of Pearl Harbor. Our team really puts an emphasis on sustainability and green practices, so we'll be obtaining a LEED Gold certification for the project by installing EV. by installing EV, electric vehicle charging, Energy Star appliances, solar PV, and the building will be a hundred percent electric. So if we're successful, uh, in obtaining our financing that, uh, we'll be pursuing here soon, uh, we plan on completing the project in May of twenty twenty-seven. We've also read and understand the TOD plan for the area and designed our project to meet those goals and objectives outlined in that plan, um, as the project will help establish the community or a community that's centered around multimodal transportation network. So right now, we're looking at the ground level, uh, which includes ingress and egress into the parking area from Le Poa Place. There'll be a residential lobby that'll face the street, as well as short-term bike parking along the sidewalk. Uh, ramp will take cars up to the second level of parking and building access points. We anticipate providing, uh, car share options on the site as well. Uh, the third floor contains most of the project's amenities, which includes an exercise room, a resource center, and an outdoor courtyard. Uh, units will include washer and dryers, dishwashers, and lots of space. Here's a side profile of the building here, showing six floors of residential units above the parking area, reaching a height of eighty feet. Here's a general unit layout. As you can see, these units are large and provide a variety of options for different household sizes. We'll have eighteen studios, fifty-one one-bedrooms, seventy-two two-bedrooms, and twelve three-bedrooms. Here's a rendering looking Maoka at the base of the building. A look at the courtyard here, providing ample space for recreational activities and family gatherings. So we'll be providing affordable rental housing options, uh, for Kamaaina households. On this slide, you can see the maximum incomes that are established by HUD, which is the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Uh, income levels are categorized by something known as AMI, or area meaning income. And this table shows those income levels in relation to the household sizes. For example, in a hypothetical situation where a three-person household makes fifty-eight thousand dollars annually, they could qualify for housing below the fifty percent AMI level. So what does this exactly mean? Up above the table, you can see some of the popular jobs in the state and their annual salaries and where these careers land uh, across the spectrum of income levels. The bottom line is, we are prioritizing housing for our workforce. These are people who are teachers, firefighters, waitresses, flight attendants, retail workers, and so on. This housing type has been a solution to keeping local people local because the maximum rents we can charge are set by these affordability standards. So we'll be submitting an application to the city and county of Honolulu for some exemptions that makes projects like this feasible. That application's called the two-one-H program. We'll be entitling this project through this two-one-H program, and in doing so, we'll be setting a hundred percent of the units at or below a hundred and twenty percent AMI, or below. The reason for this is because we'll be pursuing two financing approaches through HHFTC next year. The first financing application, which is our primary focus and our first priority, is the low-income housing tax credit financing application, or LITEC. This will allow us to provide rental units affordable to households making sixty percent AMI or below. This application will be submitted in February and expect to hear back on an award sometime in the third quarter of twenty twenty-four. These applications are very competitive and will be competing with several projects across the state. If, in the event, we are not successful in receiving an allocation of funding, we'll have to pivot and submit our second prior, priority application from HHFTC's Rental Housing Revolving Fund Tier Two Program. This program was created last year, uh, specifically for financing rental housing projects like this for our missing middle. The missing middle is also known as workforce housing by some. It's a reference to the missing middle segment of households who make too much money to qualify for the low-income units below sixty percent AMI, but make too little to pay for market rate units.
Yep.
Their incomes range from eighty to a hundred and twenty percent AMI. The application for this funding program should be available, we think, in the second half of next year and should award projects at the end of, uh, twenty twenty-four. It's important to note that the project remains entirely the same, um, as far as the design and everything. Just the financing approach determines what level of affordability we can offer. Here's a look at the rent ranges for our units for application in February. A large majority of the units are ones and two-bedrooms, as you can see. Um, also, these prices are very affordable compared to what's out there in the market right now. Uh, we're also showing you a list of our milestones we'll be completing to get, uh, to lease up. Our draft environmental assessment was just submitted to DPP today. Uh, we don't anticipate any major impacts to the surrounding area as we've completed all the environmental studies and reports to make our determination that we anticipate, uh, a finding of no significant impact. Following this, we'll submit an application for a special management area major permit concurrently with our two-one-H application to DPP for an approval in February. We anticipate having all of our funding awarded by November of next year, and we'll be able to start construction in January twenty twenty-six, if that's the case, and complete our project in May of twenty twenty-seven. With that, that's our presentation, and thanks again for the opportunity. We're here for any questions.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you. Um, can you go back to the, like, first couple slides or the location is preferable, actually? Okay, here we go. Okay, um, have you, have you done, have you had an opportunity, cause I drove by there the other day, actually, take a look at this location. Um, have you had an opportunity to go around and talk to any of the residents around there? Um, around that area?
Um, no, we have not talked to, uh, the residents in the area. We did submit notification of, uh, this presentation tonight to the adjoining property owners, though.
Okay. What I would recommend the, yeah, what I would recommend that you do is, is just to maybe go knock on some doors around there, talk to some of the residents around there, and get some ideas or thoughts, uh, of what they think, um, about this particular project. From my perspective, it's highly needed, right? We need affordable housing on this air, on this island, and, um, this is one way to, you know, combat that. Or, um, to, to actually provide relief for that. Um, but, um, but what, but what we have, what we have found in the past is when developers wanna come in and put in uh, housing condos, uh, high-rises, whatever it is, the best way to do that is to get input from the surrounding community about, um, their concerns. And so, um, uh, I, I'll tell you right now, parking is gonna be one of the bigger concerns about this particular project. So, um, addressing that, uh, would, would go a long way to, um, relieving a lot of concerns with the surrounding area residents. So tha- that's all I wanted to say, so.
Where's, where's the parking?
Uh, I'm sorry, who's that?
Lynn.
Oh, go ahead.
Where's your parking?
Uh, the parking will be on the first and second levels onsite.
Thank you.
And how much parking are you, are you assigning per unit?
So right now, it's a little less than a one-to-one ratio. So it's a hundred and fifty parking stalls. There's a hundred and fifty-three units total.
Yeah, that's it. And that, that's a major problem. Uh, you know, thank you for your very nice presentation and what you have proposed is really needed, so I applaud you for that. But in Hawaii, usually both people in a household work, so both people are going to need cars. We have a two and three-bedroom places available, so there's gonna be a lot more than one family unit. So to have only one hundred and fifty parking stalls for a hundred and fifty-three units is really just asking for a disaster in parking. So although what you have proposed is desperately needed, we also desperately need to provide adequate parking. So it shouldn't be one fifty, it should be like three hundred, and even then, you're not gonna have enough parking. So I would suggest adding another floor of parking to get as close to two parking spots per unit as you can.
Appreciate that, Beemack, thank you.
Yes. Okay, where, where is this area?
Location.
No, that's not across the water class.
Yeah.
Right next to Pearl Kai.
To me.
It's a great location.
Good location.
I think the collections are fabulous.
Is there an existing apartment complex there right now?
There is.
Is it pepper trees? Or something?
Yes, yes. Fire hazard.
Is there a reason why you, you limit it to eight floors? Of?
Um, yeah.
Um, obviously, you know, that, there, it's, it's sensitive, the height in that area. And, and then also costs become a challenge once you go vertical more than the, uh, eight floors that we have there. You get into a podium deck structure that's multiple stories concrete, and it increases, increased cost, almost two hundred dollars per square foot per unit. And if you extrapolate that out, it becomes quite more expensive and it eats up more of the resources. So you'd only, you'd be able to do much less units with the same dollar amounts than you can with uh, this type of structure. So it's a cost, it's a cost, it's a reason, uh, the cost drives.
Does, does adding a floor of parking impact that?
Uh, it does. Uh, we took that into consideration. Uh, you would lose units, um, and it would, you know, obviously drive costs up. We're hopeful, and I know there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of conversation out there regarding TOD, right? Uh, you know, the station is a block and a half away.
Right.
So we just, we believe that, you know, that's, that's why, uh, this is in the, is in the, is in the district, the TOD district. So we have to hope that the, the use is greater than it is now, obviously, because it's new, but, you know, I agree with you. We have other properties on, on it. We, we, we do have some parking challenges. But we're hoping that over time, this is a long-term goal, that, hey, maybe there is more shared car usage. We're, we're struggling. Our hope, our Moiliili project, which is all Kapuna, we parked one-third car per unit, third of a car. We struggled. We struggled. We leased it up, and there was high demand, but you know, it, it, people began to look at it as, hey, maybe I can do without the car and make other arrangements. So it is difficult. It's, it's, it's a balance, right? And it's, uh, it can be difficult. It, it's, it makes it tough. I'm nervous about it because I always worry about being the guarantor of the entire financing structure, right? What happens if I have vacancies, right? It's not about me making money, it's about me paying off the loan, right, being able to pay. So I worry about parking, I really, really do, and I worry about the impact in the area to the community, right, to the neighbors. So you, those are good points. I, I did, that's the one note I did take back is hey, be sensitive to parking, cause I've learned that lesson, right?
Yeah.
There might be some things we can look at there, and that's good feedback, and that's why we welcome these open conversations so that we can get feedback, cause I, I don't wanna have challenges with occupancy mainly, right? And then having the neighborhood upset, oh, these dads came in, they did this great project, but hey, it's caused a strain on all the neighbors with their parking, so.
Right.
So thank you, that's, those are good points.
Cause what, what will happen, what will happen is, is that if the parking becomes an issue, residents will come here, right? And then I will go to the, the DOT, uh, or some other entity and ask for an RPZ, you know, which is a restrictive parking zone. And then your residents will have no parking. They only have one stall, and that'll be it, because they won't be able to park on the street. Or they'll get towed. And so, so that's, that's, that's what's gonna be the reality. And so that's why if we can stop that from happening early, uh, by planning accordingly, uh, that would be a better solution. And, and this is something that we dealt with already, like in Ha- Halava Heights Apartments, they ran into that same situation. So, so it's not like this is, would be an unknown thing. This has already happened before. Okay.
Oh, Chair, what?
To go ahead.
Hi, this is Richard. Um, uh, were the area electeds notified about this, or have you talked to them about?
I'm sorry?
The project. Um, were the area elected officials notified?
Uh, I don't believe so. Uh, we got in late. We're up against, uh, you know, some timelines that, uh, for that, I do apologize for not, uh, getting to everybody in advance. I mean, look, with the emergency proclamation getting amended, you know, it, it caused us some juggling, right? We're all trying to get things ready for the application to provide affordable housing in February. So, you know, we're, we had to get on this agenda. The holidays coming up. This is information only. We're not looking for a vote, I don't believe, right? So, uh, we just wanted to present, and we're getting positive feedback. So that I do apologize for not getting to the elected officials.
Yeah, I just wanna jump in here. Um, I think my dad's meeting to say more of an in-person kind of formal meeting with the council, uh, member and, uh, but we did give all the proper notice and, uh, information on the project to all the agencies during the environmental assessment period. So that information has been out there and circulated. And you said the residents were notified male? Uh, yes, the adjoining property owners were, were notified of this.
I was referring to Councilman Cordero, the city mayor, realizing we need to come talk to you ahead of time. Cause we're rushing, I do apologize. I know, I do.
Uh, and I have, uh, I don't know if this is a dumb question. Um, with your other properties, I mean, is it even possible to like, do like a basement-level parking to add space going down instead of always going up?
Uh, we looked at that, but obviously is, you know.
I know, it's right by the water.
Yeah, that, that can be challenging from a cost perspective and very, uh, challenging from an engineering perspective and costly, so.
I have a question. Sorry, I came in late. Do you guys still have a town hall meeting where all the residents within the vicinity, did their complete input and impact?
Uh, we have not. Uh, we have talked to the residents, uh, onsite, and, uh, but we've not done anything.
That's kind of the same concern that we had going through the CDP process right now. Robert told us, yeah, everybody's on board, and you're saying, you know what, there's a petition with forty uh, residents from the area that was totally against it, and that, no, that's just why we got a measure coming up that if the developer or applicant was less than truthful, then one of these major consequences, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. We, we intend on doing that. Obviously, we wanted to get out here first. Like I said, we're, th- there's no excuse for not being in front of that. We didn't really think that we'd have the opportunity to be this close to, we thought we'd be further ahead. This is a very complicated project. Even with the SMA, we may not make it. To be quite honest with you, I don't think we'll make it for February application, which means we'll have to wait a whole year if a tier-two doesn't come on. These projects are very, very complicated, very time-sensitive. So it's one application per year for tax credits in February. We're hopeful that a tier-two application comes out. So we're trying to get applications in. This is one of the stronger ones that we have. We have two others. And so, um, it's, it's, it's a timing issue, which I do believe that community input is needed, especially on this project. But we're also sensitive to that. We don't wanna get too far in front of ourselves, right? We wanna hear from, you know, others and, and get a sense of, can we get in line? We take this feedback, we go talk to, like, you know, this, this, the current property is very old, and it's not the best housing stock that's out there, right? And the residents that are there support it, that live there. Now, granted, you know, the neighbors, you know, unless it's a viewshed corridor, which I, you know, that could be a challenge, I could see, and parking. But I don't, I don't know what else, you know, and I can't speak for them, but I don't know what else.
Cause you know, right, when you go for a premium for building, you have to, you know, part of these requirements is you have to get the approval of the neighborhood board.
Yes, that's correct.
So you're coming here with information, eventually you're gonna have to come back up before this body, you have to get the approval. What I'm saying, so all this consideration right now, like, taking into consideration right now, it's like, I have a town hall meeting that all these residents in the vicinity and whatever that, you know, that criteria from the CDP application is. You have to have something like, I don't know, was it, uh, council member, what is it, the radius from within applicants zones, like within a three-quarter mile, a half a mile, whatever it is?
Well, let me be clear, we did that. We notified all the residents.
Yeah, but I mean, having an actual open town hall forum for them to speak their mind, but that's.
Yeah, so I think, you know, in all of our projects, coming to the neighborhood board meeting, especially in our timing situation is a first step, where we can get ideas on what are the different community-based organizations that are out there that we should be talking to? Is a town hall setting the best setting to do it? Maybe getting guidance from you guys, which we're getting.
Maybe getting guidance from you guys, which we're getting today, the community engagement. It's kind of how we how we typically do it. And so these are all good suggestions and we can definitely set up those meetings.
Right now, the application for the CDP, she came before this board and added the writings with her application and brought to the city. Yeah, we had all everyone on board and ensuring myself is the one who actually decided. We went into the community, we started talking to all the neighbors over there. And we found out everybody was not informed, that everybody was against it, right? So you tell me what's this right now, you did talk to neighbors, then we go out there and we have to start talking to the folks in the whole.
Let me, let me be clear on something, if I may, sorry to, but if you ask around town about how we do things, our reputation speaks for itself. We're involved in a lot of properties here, a lot of projects here. We do get involved with the community. So we haven't done that here. We came here. Where I did make a mistake was not going to councilperson Cordero. And we're just rushed in this case, and for that, I apologize. But we will get involved in the community. We came here, as my son said, to be able to at least present here, get feedback. The parking one was a great one. We want to have, but we don't go into communities without that. I mean, so it's, we know that. So I do appreciate feedback.
Yeah, I mean, what we what we've found, what we've found is that when a developer comes in and just engages with the community, usually the community understands the situation. And they also under, and they're compassionate to it. Yeah, it's when when the developer doesn't talk to the community and just goes ahead and does whatever is when there's a lot of heartache involved. So that would be my advice to you. Um, is to uh go out there and just spend the time now to listen to the community and here, get their input and then take that and try and incorporate it into your project.
Oh, we appreciate that. Thank you.
I have a question. Where is the location of this place? You said by the water, Chris? Can you tell me like where I would know if you tell me where it is, you know, what are the boundaries?
It's right here.
Do you know where the carryover is, May?
Yeah, yeah.
Prokai Shopping Center.
Yeah, okay, now I know. Pepper Ridge.
Yeah.
But there is a rail coming close by, so it has some potential.
Yeah, and what I can tell the board is, if you drive down there and take a look at it, these buildings are, I think, two story. They are very old. They're like old motel style format type building. Um, where the doors is on, the door to enter the units is an outside door. It's not like in a corridor or anything like that. You can actually access it from a walkway on the outside. So um, it is definitely in need of some rehabilitation. Uh, in fact, that whole area kind of does. So this would, I would hope would kickstart something greater in that particular area.
I mean, we did talk to Comemay Schools, who's next door. We have talked to them. I'd say they're in some, so just the the other neighbors that are, you know, more have a side we have not talked to.
Right.
I do agree. We do need to do that.
Right. But the Comemay Schools might be the owners, but they're not the residents. And that's, the residents are going to come to us. So.
I know I have relatives who's come from the main, I've been visiting us over here, I can, they used to stay in those hotels over there, so. I mean, it's bad, but that's just even, so. Yeah, he's been around for a while, I'm definitely, he's, he'll be there. Because they were very kind of pretty bad.
Yeah. So what's, before we hop off, because I don't want to dwell on this too much longer, button up against nine o'clock now. Um, yeah, I don't, I don't want to sound like we're against it because we're not. We're, I think the board, I know myself, is for this project, uh, highly needed. Not just for the island, but for IA, it's going to be beneficial. Um, so if there's things that you need or there are things that we can do for you, please reach out to me and I will do what I can to assist. Um, uh, okay, so with that, I'd like to leave it, move on. If uh no other questions, can we move on to the next?
Chair, this is Logan. Uh, Garner's had his hand up online for a while. He's been patient.
All right, and Garner, you're the last person. Let's go ahead.
Yeah, I I the question is, um, I think you mentioned Pepper, Pepper Tree is the existing tenant or or the existing occupants? Is is that correct? Is that the only um tenant?
Well, it's it's Pepper Tree Apartments is the apartment name. There are tenants.
Okay, okay, that's the only one. Do you know how many um residents um would be displaced by that?
I believe there's around about fifty-three to fifty-eight um units.
Okay, you you think they would be offered um first opportunity for your new facility, which is definitely an upgrade and a beautiful um development for sure.
Oh, yeah, of course. If if they're still in need of housing, we we plan on uh, you know, in all of our projects like this, that we have um, you know, tenants that, you know, may be displaced and maybe even it's temporary while we get the construction done. Uh, we provide uh relocation, you know, assistance in form of, you know, services to help them find an affordable place to live. Um, you know, as uh, you know, courtesy, maybe helping with some of their moving costs as well. But um, you know, we always let our, let the current residents know that, you know, they're kind of uh first in line, so to speak, for the uh applications when they come out.
All right, that's great. Well, pray for um blessings and um good fortune for your project. Thank you.
Okay. All right, with that, with that, gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and move on. Um, thank you for your guys' report. Uh, when can we expect um an update? Like, I I don't expect one anytime soon, but when would be a good opportunity for you guys to come back and talk to us again?
Yeah, oh, that that's a great question. Obviously, as I mentioned earlier, uh, February is the application date. Obviously, we need to get the SMA major approved. So um, I would think that probably after February, we could let you know whether we got, whether we got it in or not. And if we didn't, we can let you know that we didn't either.
Okay, good luck with that. And yeah, come back, um, come back in the February, March timeframe. That would be a great opportunity for you guys to come back.
Good luck. Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, thank you. Yep, happy Thanksgiving to you too. Okay, let's uh move on to the approval of the meeting minutes written summary for video record Tuesday, September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Anybody have any uh edits, any, any comments about those regular meeting written summary? Okay, going once, going twice. Okay, so um, can we go ahead and make a vote on the approval of those regular meeting written summary? Okay, so we have, uh, who wants to second that approval?
I second.
Are there any objections?
No, been like, it's left in city.
Okay, nothing heard. The regular meeting written summary for video record for Tuesday, September twelfth, twenty twenty-three has been approved.
Hey, Chair, could I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead, Logan.
Yes, guys, just to try to the sidebar conversation, just because it's kind of a lot to keep all the mics under control. And it's picking up when one of them's unmuted, they're all unmuted, yeah. So I always realize that.
Okay.
It's picking up online whenever you guys are talking.
Okay.
Thanks, Chair.
Okay, thank you. It's not as disruptive as you think, Logan, but yeah, it is picking up, so. Um, okay, uh, let's go ahead and move on to resident community concerns. Anybody have anything? Please limit to three minutes. Okay, nothing heard. All right, moving on. Elected officials, uh, Governor Green's office.
Hello, hi.
Hello.
It's Janelle Sunnyishi. I'm with the Department of Agriculture, but representing the governor's office. Um, let me see if I can get. Um, but the last meeting, uh, Chairwood asked for contacts for the fire prevention, wildfire prevention. Did you get my email? I sent you an email with um information and contacts.
I don't think I did, but um I'll take a look again.
Okay, I was sent on October second, uh, October twelfth. But I can briefly tell you that, you know, that the State House of Representatives established a wildfire prevention working group. And the co-chairs are Representatives Linda Ichiyama and Darius Keela. Um, they are preparing a report to be submitted to the legislature um this coming session. Also, there's.
I found it, by the way, so thank you. Okay.
And there's uh the wildfire management organization that also helps communities with prevention uh mid or fire prevention mitigation. And um there's contacts there, Manny Barretto and Edith Biff Pickett. Um, they have a whole list of communities that they are helping with wildfire mitigation. So um you may want to consider that. I also have contacts for the Department of Land and Natural Resources that have two staff working on fire, wildfire mitigation, Jeff Tanaka and Michael Walker. And uh, from what I saw from a Civil Beat article, that Honolulu's managing director, Mike Formby, is in charge of assessing the wildfire risk on Oahu. And there's some contact information there. So that, um, as I say, also a board member expressed concern about the threats made against the governor and his family. Um, I checked with the office and they said details are not um currently available. But in the interview that the governor and the first lady did on Hawaii News Now Spotlight, they had mentioned their concerns. And the governor did mention that most of the threats are coming from outside of the state. But uh they said it's especially disheartening to hear racial slurs coming from Hawaii residents against the governor and his family. Um, they tried to shield their children from negativity, but have counseled them to be careful and uh stay in groups when they're out in the public. They do appreciate the concern. There was also a question from a member of the public asking if the former Board of Education Chairman Bruce Wass departed over the department's solar powered air conditioning system contract. Uh, DOE says they, that was not the case. And they added that the board chair is appointed by the governor and the department works collaboratively with whomever is appointed to lead the Board of Education. I'll point you to the governor's newsletter at governor.hawaii.gov. And that's it. I can take any questions there are.
All right, thank you. Board members, any questions for uh Governor Green's office? Okay, nothing heard. Community members, any questions for Governor Green's office? Okay, there's a question, please.
There was an article that came out that the governor announced a hundred fifty million recovery fund for Maui fire victims. And in that a hundred fifty, I guess, Hone Electric was going to throw in some money. Comemay Schools is going to put in some money. Is there any conflict of interest in the state partnering up with Hone Electric and Comemay Schools? Because the state has a PUC that's supposed to have oversight over Hone Electric. Um, I just wonder if there's a conflict of interest there by doing that. Because at the end of the day, the taxpayer and the ratepayers are going to pay for all these things happening in Maui. But I don't know, did the state look at that? Is there any kind of conflict of interest?
I can check, but I believe the announcement was made by the state attorney general. So um I can check with their office and get back to the board. Because I don't know the legal aspects of it. I'm sure it was vetted through the uh the state attorney general.
Yeah, and then there was another article that came out that Hone Electric hired a bankruptcy expert as a CFO. They paying him one point five million for fifteen months of work. They also paid him two hundred fifty thousand for moving expenses. Is there any oversight as far as how Hone Electric spends their money moving forward?
I I can check on that. Probably with the PUC.
Because what happened before that was there's another article that said, um, Hone Electric suspends dividends, draws down credit lines. Hone Electric apparently pulled out three hundred seventy million dollars on the revolving credit line. And I'm just wondering if Hone Electric is going to have, or anybody's going to have any oversight as far as how Hone Electric spends their monies?
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll pose that question, probably to the PUC.
Yeah, I just wondered because, like I said, at the end of the day, the taxpayer, the ratepayer, the shareholders are going to be responsible for cleaning up whatever happened in Maui. And I'm just curious how much the taxpayers are going to be paying for. The state has the biggest pocket.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other questions? Okay, nothing heard. Thank you, ma'am, for your time.
Thank you.
And happy.
Holidays.
And happy holidays. Okay, US Representative Casey's office. Okay, nothing heard. Master is not on. Okay, Senator Wakai's office. Okay, nothing heard. Senator Alfante, rep, sir.
Hi. Great evening, Chairwood. Members of the IA Neighborhood Board, Brandon Alfante. Um, sorry, I missed the last meeting. However, Michael from my staff or Jan was here to be present. I have already reported. However, I do want to mention that the legislature, specifically the state senate, will be going back into special session this Friday for the nominees to the Supreme Court. There are two nominees. One of whom is the ICA Chief Judge Lisa Gonozza. And the other one is Vladimir Devon, who's a private attorney in private practice. Uh, so we have a committee hearing and then we'll go to special session on Monday and Tuesday uh to go through the confirmation process to 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 fill two vacancies due to retirement on the Supreme Court. Uh, otherwise, uh, Michael and myself, we did site visits in the IA Pro City area to look at the different projects going on and looking at the different CIPs. Thanks for the support for the board, uh, for your support for the CIP projects for the IA community. Uh, we met at the IA Luke Trail, got to see different sites um throughout the district. I also want to acknowledge General Manager Tanelli from Pro Rites for the complaints that we received as well. That was a letter that was shared. Um, so thank you for following up with them. And also to Casey Ave for the follow-ups for each dot. With that, happy Thanksgiving, happy holidays, and see you in the new year. Who's Mary Ward? Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, happy holidays to you too as well. Uh, board members, any questions for the center? Okay, nothing heard. Uh, community members, any questions for the center? Okay, thank you, sir. Happy happy holidays. Okay, State Representative Ichiyama. Okay, nothing heard. All right, State Representative Kimau. Are you? Never gets there, right? Okay, nothing heard. Okay, Senator.
Sorry, Chair. Sorry, I'm here.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Hi, board members. Uh, sorry, I haven't been up present at the meetings. Um, I've been traveling with the with the House Finance Committee to different islands. Um, so just do some analysis on um state projects that could need funding in the future. Um, I hope you guys all got my card in the mail. Uh, I think it should have came on Friday. Um, de-fueling is nearly complete. Um, I think they only have a few hundred gallons left to de-feel. It should be done in the next week or two. There's also a Red Hill um task force meeting tomorrow. Wednesday, it's one to five PM at the Blaisdell Center. Um, and then please look in the mail. I should have a survey coming out in the mail in the near future just to see where the community is on certain issues. So besides that, um, I also like to wish all you guys a happy holidays as we take a little break.
Thank you for dialing in on the road. Much appreciated. Um, and uh, board members, any questions for uh the representative? All right, nothing heard. Community members, any questions for the representative?
Uh, hi, this is Gardner. How's it, Michael?
Hey, Gardner.
Um, question is, a meeting tomorrow for Red Hill. Um, is that going to be like rehashing redundant information or is there new new information that's going to be presented?
Uh, this is a, it's it's run by the Department of Health and the Army. I think this is going to recap de-fueling and what they intend to do in the future. Um, I can put something in the chat on the agenda for the meeting. I can put something in the chat on the agenda for the meeting right after we're done here, so you can see what's going to be discussed.
Right on. Mahalo.
Okay, thanks, Gardner.
Okay, take it easy.
Hey, if there are no other questions, we're going to let you go. Have safe travels. Have a happy holidays.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, board members.
Okay, Representative Kong, you're up, sir.
Oh, hello, Chair, board members. Good to see you all, even if it's on Zoom. One thing is, I want to correct Casey a little bit. The Lions on the Move Club did a major cleanup underneath the freeway on Kahali Street. And they paint, and they were the ones that painted out the graffiti. So just to let you know, that like, give kudos to the Lions on the move. Also, we had Aloha Ia Halewileko groundbreaking ceremonies for the 140 unit senior residential housing for affordable. So that turned out very well, and that took nine years. So from the inception, because even though the I A Committee Association had a dream all these years, it took nine years to put in place. So this project coming up, if they can beat that, that's kind of amazing, right? And one thing good about their project is they left space, or they had to anyway, for their I A intermediate school's children to cut, get out of school and into school on a pathway, so they could cut your cul-de-sac and go to the library and such. So it turned out well. We cut down the tall grass so that before the fence went up, and now we're removing the roots of that. So there's a passage we're probably 20 feet wide now. But we'll keep doing it. We'll keep improving it. So we'll see how it goes. Oh, and one last thing. Thursday, there's going to be a whole lot of meetings concerning the wildfire committees. So I'm not sure if you're interested in any, but it's posted on social media and everywhere else. So it'll let you know where it is. Other than that, happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas.
Yeah. Happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas to you too. Board members, any questions for the representative? Okay, nothing heard. Community members, any questions for representative? All right, nothing heard. All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time, and we'll talk to you in January.
January.
All right, moving on, the mayor's office. Haku, how are you today?
Doing great. How are you, Chair?
Doing awesome.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Hakumelis Department of Design and Construction with the city. Got a long reports. I'll jump right in. This month's highlights from mayor's newsletter, affordable housing updates across Oahu. County mayor's tour Lahaina wildfire zone, multi, I'm sorry, a million dollar grant for art on Oahu. How to weigh in on Oahu's climate strategy and new city services available in Kapolei. I'll put the link in the chat. Neighborhood Commission Office is hiring neighborhood board assistants to engage in public awareness for community support. Neighborhood assistants can help coordinate with neighborhood board chairs to produce written reports to members of the public. Please send your resume to nco@honolulu.gov or call the NCO at 808-768-3710. Issues from last time. There was a question about storm drains on private property. What is the policy for having storm drains on private property cleared by the city? Member Dwyer would like a contact for DFM because of root buildup at his property needs to be cleared. DFM provided response, city storm drains within city drainage easements that are in private property are maintained by DFM. Other non-city storm drains are not maintained by the city. For questions of maintenance and storm drains, please contact DFM's Division of Road Maintenance by phone at 808-768-3600. That's 768-3600. Or email at dfmroads@honolulu.gov. Canal cleaning, the canal between the old Sears building and Sumita Farm needs to be cleared. This area is notorious for buildup of trash, shopping carts, and other debris, especially after heavy rain. The Kalau Springs Canal at Pearl Ridge is scheduled for thorough cleaning in January of 2024, subject to availability of crane equipment. The upper canal area, non-titally influenced, will be checked for trash and debris prior to the end of this month and will be removed as needed. There was a question about electric battery disposal. A resident requested the proper procedure for people to dispose of their electric batteries for their vehicles. E and V provided the response that electric vehicle car battery should be returned to the manufacturer. Residents can also check in with battery bills. They can potentially do disposal, but would likely have a fee assessed. Next, a resident inquired about the status of the application process of the Maritas Galato Care Home being granted condition to use permit. DPP provided response that on October 26, 2023, a condition to use permit 2023 slash CUP dash 25 was approved with conditions. Anyone wishing to appeal the director's action must submit written petition and a $400 filing fee to the zoning board of appeals by November 25, 2023. For more information, please contact Lena Holmes. And I'm going to put the name and the contact in the chat for this one. Next is wildfire mitigation. What steps are being taken by the city to ensure that similar situations to the Lahaina wildfires do not occur in I A and the surrounding areas? Details about any potential fire breaks being looked at in the area are also requested. So HFT provided a very thorough and lengthy response, and I'll read for you guys. HFT is currently evaluating wildland urban interface areas islandwide and working with the State of Hawaii Department of Transportation to clear and create fire breaks in areas of concern. The HFD is prepared to respond to all emergencies and has mechanisms in place to recall personnel to increase staffing. The HFD has also, also has memorandums of understanding agreement with other departments in the city and county of Honolulu and state and federal fire departments to provide additional firefighting resources and equipment. The HFD increased the number of resources initially dispatched to a wildland fire from one to three, specifically two engines and one tanker. Please refer to the HFD website at www.fire.honolulu.gov for more information. And there's some, some additional information on that you can get. I'll put in the chat. The HFD website may also be accessed via our quick response code stickers located on HFD apparatuses and auxiliary vehicles. Our Fire Prevention Bureau may be reached at 808-723-7161 if residents believe there is a fire code violation regarding brush or vegetation in proximity to their homes. Last, there was a question about Halava District Park enforcement. Multiple residents requested that additional signage be installed at Halava District Park in order to assist HPD with enforcement in the area. Concerns over usage of the park after hours and activity that goes on in the park were discussed. DPR responded. We will initiate a review process to determine the most effective placement and type of signage needed at Halava District Park. Our aim is to ensure that the signage is clear, informative, and strategically positioned to discourage any inappropriate activities within the park after park closure. DPR will coordinate closely with HPD to gather their input and expertise in developing a comprehensive plan for signage implementation that aligns with their enforcement strategies. That is my report. Happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you for that. I think you've followed up pretty much on everything that we talked about last, the last time we got together. So I really appreciate that. Board members, any questions for the mayor's office? All right, nothing heard. Community members, any questions for the mayor's office? Okay, I have a question. Go ahead.
What is such status for the landfill?
What is the status of the landfill? I will have to reach out to E and V, Department of Environmental Services, and get back to you on that. I'm not familiar with the current status right now.
Like what in particular, what in particular are you asking that question for?
They're talking about using military land. And I was just wondering as far as the location of the island, where they're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other community questions?
Haku, I missed that part of, I think it was Halava Park. And I'm guessing that was in response to a previous ongoing concern about misuse of the park. Can you just repeat what was the corrective actions taken, something about signage, yeah?
Yes, so DPR said that they're going to initiate a review process to determine the most effective placement and type of signage needed. They said they're going to work with HPD to get their input and expertise in developing comprehensive plan for signage implementation that aligns with their enforcement strategies. I think the issue is what they put in there has to be, you know, they have to be able to point to it and say they're enforcing something specific. So they want to make sure the verbiage is right. At least that's what, like, the way I kind of read it.
Right, got it. Okay, thank you. Mahalo.
Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and move on. Thank you, Haku.
Is there another, I see a hand up on the, in the room.
Is there another question?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Fazan.
Hi, Haku. We, I posed a question to the fire department, and I believe Mr. Higa had also posed a question to HPD regarding the same bus stop. When the rail opened, one of the new bus stops is over by West Ridge Shopping Center. I forgot the bus stop number, but it's where the A Express stopped. And that's where the, I forgot the commuter bus route that stopped there also. There's two buses that come around that side. But the A Express, those buses tend to kind of sit there for a while. I brought it up to HFD because of the bus stop sign was placed right by the fire hydrant. And according to some information I found online, you know, vehicles are supposed to be, you know, so many distance away from fire hydrants, right? And so it should apply to the bus too. And so I asked if they had any issue with it. They were supposed to get back to me. I think somebody misunderstood the question, and the guy who reported today didn't even know about the question, I guess. I don't know what his deal was, but.
Okay, I'll, I'll add it to my report. I'll also talk to you.
You know, is because if something were happened to any of those businesses at the shopping center and the fire department responds, there's going to be an issue. And it's right by the entrance where the main sign is for West Ridge, which is the issue that Higa brought up regarding people exiting and the buses are blocking the view. And so my concern is, how does DOT determine where to place their bus stops when they're relocating or, you know, coming up? How did they manage to place that there in the first place?
Yeah, I'm, I know a lot goes into planning these bus routes and these bus stop locations. I can't say specifically why this one isn't there, but I will bring it up to both HPD and to DTS so that they can provide a response for you, okay?
Yes, if you could help with following up with both departments on both concerns, that would be very helpful.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Hang on, Chair. I got a question for Haku before he leaves. I got a question in regards to you mentioning about that appeal for the CUP is a $400 filing fee. That $400 filing fee, is it for the applicant, or what if the community wanted to go ahead and try and appeal the approval of that permit?
You know, to be honest, I'm not sure exactly what the process is. But I am going to put the contact name and information for who you can reach out to to get more information. And I can read it to you right now, or I can put it in the chat, whatever is easier, or I can send it to Chair Wood. He can distribute it.
I can't see the chat from here, that's why. So.
Hey, Haku, this is Logan. I can give it to Tracy. I have the reporter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Yeah. Whatever happened to that monster house after that, two months ago, we had a real interesting, you know, discussion, and the lady never showed up. I thought she would follow up, but nothing happened. What was the final decision? And did she ever build that extension, and the neighbors were all upset? I want to know the results. Nobody answered that question, yeah? The monster house, remember? She was there talking, and everybody was against her, but there's no follow up.
I think that's, May, I think, I think that's what we're discussing with this permit.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
No, I was wondering that, that, that name, you know, I said, I want to hear whatever happened. You know, the neighbors all came out and supported, and nothing, no follow up. When you got to address it, like, I didn't know Pepper Ridge, because I don't drive that. When I said, oh, over there, now I know where it is.
Yeah, so that, so that conditional use permit was approved with conditions. And so the information will be, will be provided. So if you want to appeal or kind of how that process goes, which I personally not familiar with, I apologize.
Thank you, Haku. Will explain to me.
Okay, anything else? Can we move on? We got about 30 minutes left. Okay, all right. Thank you, Haku.
Thank you, Chair.
Move on to.
Holidays.
Yep, happy holidays to you too as well. Councilmember Okimoto's office.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, board. Haku always steals my thunder here. But just wanted to quickly go through some things. We're still working through Bill 48, which seeks to cap the home assessed values for ages over 65. And Bill 52, which encourages penalties on those monster home. The current penalties on that. Um, let's see here. The, we're, we're getting a lot of calls about clearing the canal. I was told that through DFM that they were, have a timeframe of December 2023. I think Haku just said it was, he has a timeframe of January, so I'll defer to the administration on that, but we're looking at that as well. About a week and a half ago, myself and another staff member did a site visit up to Newtown Estates. Wanted to check out the, the park there. I noticed there's no signage there, so I've asked Parks to install some no camping signs or something to that effect. They have not gone back to me yet. I also have asked for a meeting with the Director of Parks. Want to see if we can put some sort of public portion, a new public portion in that park back there. So, which will allow the Parks Department to, to go back and maintain, not daily, but maintain on a regular schedule, the brush and debris in the park to help deter some of that homeless back there as well. We do have an informational briefing tomorrow with HFD at 9 o'clock. They're going to be answering some questions on the fire mitigation plan, so we do invite you to that. You can find the information on honolulu.gov as well. With that, I think I'll wrap it up, and I can take any questions if needed.
Okay, thank you for your report. Board members, any questions for Councilmember Okimoto's office? Okay, community members, any questions? Okay, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Have a great holiday.
Yeah, happy holidays to you too. All right, last but not least, Councilmember Cordero, welcome.
Good evening, neighborhood board members, Chair Wood, and those online and those joining us here in person. Braden Cordero, your council member for Council District 7. And you had my report, but we did our report just a little bit earlier, so we could get it to you all ahead of time. But I did want to know that, note that we got word that the gymnasium, pool, recreations, recreation rooms, and comfort. But I did want to know that note that we got word that the gymnasium pool, recreations, recreation rooms and comfort stations at Aia District Park will be closed until November, Monday, next Monday, oh no, not next Monday. I don't know what today is, but I guess next week, Monday, November twenty. So our maintenance, so D P R's maintenance crews can finish the repairs through the watered backflow preventer. However, as you all know, at the annex, there are restrooms available there as well. So once again, it's the gymnasium pool, recreation rooms and comfort station bathrooms, conversations that are closed at Aia District Park, but of course the fields are open and the basketball courts are open as well. Before I move to my report, I do want to thank Mr. Board Member Glenn for also your email to my office and we'll be sure to be back, be back with you with your concern. With that, I would like to highlight a few things. First up, I know that you all got to meet Noah at the, here at the Neighborhood Board. We're having him activate Makalapa and friends of, joining the friends of Makalapa. We're hoping to go beyond what we're, what we've been doing for the past year and a half at the park. And we're taking it to where many of the students who live around the area go to, which is Aia Elementary School. We'll be having a meeting this Thursday. I want to thank Board Member Vasquez for her kukua and support by donating some slippers. And so that will be at six P M. at Aia Elementary School. There is something that I do want to bring up that's not on this report relating to our Makalapa neighborhood as well as Aia Elementary. It's something that I'm hoping to coordinate with the area, my state area elected officials in the area, which is, which are Senator Klowakai as well as Representative Nda Ichiyama to do a walk audit. As you all know and have heard from the beginning of the school year, there have been students, including Aia Complex area that don't have school buses anymore. So there have been arrangements for a good number of them. At Aia Elementary, there was a hundred thirty students that didn't have, that couldn't utilize a school bus anymore. There's a good number of them coming from the lava states, Makalapa area that are walking to Aia Elementary. I got to meet with this, with Stadium, I don't know if it's still on there, and talk to them a little bit about it. We're working with the Department of Transportation Services with support from Stadium, Hawaii Public Housing Authority, and especially the principal at Aia Elementary to hopefully do a walk audit or provide a walking school bus. I know it sounds kind of weird, but this is something that I, I have experience with in Kahawiki Kalihie area in that part of my former district where we did that with the towers at Kohio Park to burn elementary school. And this was called a walking school bus. And eventually, you know, twelve years later, you know, we had a better access for this, for the keke to walk to, but this is something that I hope to maybe start with our Aia Elementary School. We haven't really set the date or anything. We couldn't really set a date as some of our city members at the transportation services got sick. So I just wanted to inform you all because I do want to include you all because not only are they, these kids just in our district, but you know, I know a lot of you all see them walking the overpass along the sidewalks and everything. So I just wanted to bring that up as something that I will be pursuing. And hopefully, if you are interested, you let me know. I would love to have you join us on these walk audits and even maybe lead the walking school bus one time. One of the big times to join us is at the beginning of the semester where we gather with the principal and with all the keke who are walking and just to show them that they have our support, to make sure that they have a safe way to access their elementary school. Next up, and just as it was offered at the Salt Lake Neighborhood Board number eighteen, because I had Deputy Director for D D C there. And we have our Director for D D C, Director Milis here. So a part of the legislative branch, you'll see that there's the Office of the City Auditor. I want you to take this with a grain of salt because I know that they receive information and they either talk to the department. They receive all the information that they get in a set amount of time. They evaluate all the information that they receive, they set a recommendation, and then they provide that to the department. And the department, as you can see here, had expressed partial agreement, agreement to the recommendations by our Office of the City Auditor. Basically, what the department, basically what the city auditor looked at was the construction, I mean, the Department of Design Construction's implementation of the city's capital improvement project and programs, I should say. So please review it, look at it. I hope if there is interest from the department or the auditor to have a further discussion about it when we, especially when we are going through our budget season. With that, I just wanted to share that I hear the main concerns and we're having more concerns with monster homes in our district. I want to be able to work with the city administration, the Neighborhood Board and Neighborhood Commission Office to bring D P P to discuss this and really hope to get clear information to you all, our Aia Neighborhood Board, and have a representative from the Department of Planning Committee here, hopefully next month, but I'll do my best to work with D P P to get them here.
That'd be great.
With that, I know that was long, but I know that I'm sometimes the main star at this, at this show. So you have my number, you have my email. Please let me know how to help you. And I have great partners, like, like all these community members here and Senator Alafine too.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Board members, any other questions for Councilmember?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So the question was, if I am able to confirm D P P to arrive, if I could let the Chair, of course, Chair Wood know in a timely manner, and I will let you know as soon as I can.
Thank you, ma'am. Roger, will do. Okay, all right, Board members, any other questions? Community members, any other?
Okay, thank you. Happy holidays. I don't know if you saw me last time, but I was doing holiday waving, but I was holiday waving again this year. Okay.
Happy holidays.
Councilmember, one question, because how about the C U P thing? Is there like, if the community wanted to appeal it, is there like a statute of limitations for the time period of that?
Okay, that's a hard question. I don't know that answer, but I'll look immediately tomorrow and then I'll send it to you. I'll send it to the whole board. And Logan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to reports. Board members attended at other meetings. I'll start off, we had a council chairs where we talked about all these different things about like the budget and a few other things. So really nothing else outside of that is kind of a repeat of other things that have occurred, you know, in terms of some of the other board members or other boards and their problems that they deal with. There was some discussion about video, this, doing hybrids, audio issues. A lot of those have been worked out, at least based on tonight. So, so I think that's about it. Does any other board members have any other meetings that they went and attended? Okay, Tracy, go ahead.
Yeah, just an update because several of the board members chaired myself and and Sergeant Arms, then we attended the chemical walkthrough of the new Halava Housing Department, so maybe, maybe say about that then.
Yeah, so we were invited by the developer over there to take a walkthrough of the area. Basically, they just showed us the construction area, what they've been doing, kind of entry points, things like where the parking is going to be. I guess some of the construction in terms of like, for example, there's like no windows on some, on one side of that building because the Navy requested that they not have windows because it overlooks where like the Navy commander sits and is off it, like that. So we kind of went through all that kind of stuff. They also reported about like dust, noise and those kind of usances that was. Lastly, they are going to do within probably about six months, I think is what they were saying, right, Tracy?
Yeah, somewhere like springtime.
Yeah, around springtime. So I would highly recommend that you attend that as the project moves along. It's pretty informative and it was worth our time.
And I also delivered several boxes of slippers for the keke over there.
Okay, great, then, thank you. Yeah, much appreciated. Yeah, anything else, guys? Councilmember, want to say something?
I forgot. Sorry, really quick, to answer your question, I kind of blanked out because I get nervous sitting here. Director Milis actually reported about the appeal process. That is November twenty five, so it is thirty days after the approval of this C U P conditional use permit.
So how many days?
Thirty days, so November twenty five is what you said, yeah? I don't know if Director Milis is on.
Yeah, Haku left, I have the report in front of me. Thirty days is right and it's November twenty fifth.
Okay.
Is there filing fee for that too?
Four hundred dollars.
Four hundred dollars?
Yes.
For the applicant, what about the company?
For the appeal filing.
I don't know about that.
We're bored. Can we use the four hundred dollars from our board, the one from the telephone?
No, no, you're not the applicant though. You're not the applicant.
Oh, that's applicant.
Thank you. And if there's any trade in, if I have to correct myself, I'll send it to the N A and swell you all.
Okay.
Thank you.
We gotta work on it fast.
I'll get on you tomorrow.
And then I'll sign it.
Okay, let's move, okay. If there are no other reports, we'll move on. Okay. Aia Community Association.
She's not here.
There's Susan Marshy.
Oh, I don't know if Ron was going to make a report, but if he's not, there is, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. There is in New York, and she did want to know that there is a book sale this Saturday from ninety two, but help is needed to set up on Friday at three thirty. And also at the end of the sale at two thirty, we would need help to put the weight of books. The, the meeting is going to be after the books sale, so I'm bringing up the books now. The book sale will be held in, in, in the, the same meeting room that you're using right now. And we're going to have a parade on December nine. Claire, we should be back on Thursday.
Okay, thank you. All right. Your hand is still raised. Okay, any other, any other questions for the A C A?
Trying to turn it on.
Okay, you're good, you're good. Okay, any other questions for A C A? All right, well, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Okay, let's move on to committees. I have nothing to report for executive transportation. Is chemo here today?
He was not here today, Chair.
Okay, any relations of publicity, Lynn?
None.
Okay, parks and rec?
None.
Okay, planning and zoning, chemo's out. Restoration Advisory Board, Military and Intergovernmental Affairs.
We have a ten day, December sixth, possibly, we are still trying to set the time. It's going to be either five thirty or six, I think. And it should be at the Oahu Veterans Center. That's December sixth. For the Rab, Pearl Harbor Hickam Rab, next meeting. It's going to be kind of like a meet and greet because we've got a whole new team of remediation people, so we're gonna introduce them. And also it's supposed to help to expand the membership. So if you are interested in learning more about Rab, the committee or the, sorry, the Restoration Advisory Board for the Pearl Harbor Hickam region, because there's other rabs around the island, but ours is specifically for the Pearl Harbor Hickam region. Please come and check it out. But I'll, I'll send it out by email when it's.
Okay, all right, thank you. Restri, Red Hill Field.
Nothing to report.
Okay, and Danielle, Education.
Set Ho'olehoya Klowa has a work day, last work day of the year, this Saturday at night.
Okay, all right, all right. Well, thank you, everybody. For announcements, we will be in Reno, Denver. Our next meeting will be in January ninth. You can also see our broadcast, O'Nelo, Channel forty nine every Thursday at six P M. We are adjourned.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays and I wish I was there with you guys today, so, all right, gonna be there.